The recording in progress.
public for which is saying one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Honorable Rooster Puppy, thank you very much. To those that I I missed it, I'm so sorry. It's right here in red. I don't know how I missed the pledge of allegiance. Forgive me. Uh, next up, the agenda approval, Councilman Saab.
The Dumb Right City Council approved the agenda for the special meeting of August twenty six, twenty twenty five.
Support motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? The aye is headed. Motion carries. Next up is public hearings and public comments. You can talk about anything you want. Seeing none, we'll take it over to Zoom. Seeing none, continue. Next up, we have comments from council members. Seeing none, we'll go to announcements from the administration. Seeing none, we'll go to public comments again. And seeing none, we're going to go to a closed session, moving into a closed session. Can I get a motion?
Councilor.
Yep.
I moved that the Dubon Heights City Council moved to a closed session at five thirty two P. M. So the city council may discuss the Dubon Heights Police Officers Association labor negotiation, which may include the city council, Mayor Bezzi, Chief of Staff Hernandez, Human Resource Director Fisher, interim Comptroller Baydoun, Roger Ferinha, and Assistant Council James Allen of Shank and.
Rusha.
Rusha, P L C.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say it. Aye.
Aye.
Rolls up. Let's take a roll call.
Do a yes or no. Um Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Moby June.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer is absent, Robert Constance absent, Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Asan Saab.
Yes.
Even Tom Wenzel is absent. Motion carries for three.
All right. Please uh make the record, indicate the record that both Councilman Wanzo and Councilwoman Breyer are both present. Um our motion carries. We're all heading over to a closed session. Uncle Wanzo.
Hey.
You've been nominated today, my friend.
Oh, I don't think.
Recording stopped.
Council Chair.
Yup.
I moved to the Dearborn Heights City Council, return to an open session at six eleven P M.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. This is an optional placeholder here, uh, from our closed session, it was just a discussion. Nothing was, uh, agreed upon, and so there, there is not going to have to be anything there, Madam Clerk. So then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, to start our regular meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Sob.
Support.
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad, any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries, we're gonna jump right into this next council meeting.
Council Chair.
Uh, hang on one second. Are these your blueberries?
No.
Okay, I'll take some then, they're not yours. Don't ask me for any, please. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the, uh, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, which is called to order today at six twelve P M. Madam Clerk, may you please take roll call.
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
Uh, President.
Moby June.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston is absent. Denise Malinowski Maxwell. Hassan Sob.
Present.
Tram Wenzel.
Here.
Mister Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much, next up we have the pledge of allegiance, Councilman Wenzel, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Alright, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys, thank you, Councilmen.
You're welcome, thank you.
Alright, welcome, next up we have agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five as submitted.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
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 All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up we have the minutes of the regular meeting of August twelfth, twenty twenty five, before anybody reads it, I do ask that please, you're showing up to this council meeting, uh, uh, you know, for the sake of the residents and for, you know, your role, take part in, in saying either aye, yea, or nay, thank you.
Um. Council Chair.
Yup, Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meeting of August twelfth, twenty twenty five as outlined in four dash eight.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries, thank you guys. Next up we have public hearings and public comments, I know a couple of you guys have called me and asked me for an additional minute, I will honor those time. Uh, it is time you can talk and discuss about anything, I wanna move it over to Zoom first, um, and so let's, uh, let's go ahead and go over to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom about any type of public comments? None? Okay, let's go to, go to public comments in person. Anyone here? Come on up ma'am, I've been waiting all day for you.
Marjorie Pasquale, Syracuse Street.
How you doing, Marjorie?
Fine, thank you. Uh, my purpose here is, I just wanted to mention that I'm, I feel very fortunate to live in a community with such great libraries, I love my libraries. They're the staff, great, they, you don't, uh, you can't find something, or you, that you don't have a book, or they don't have the book, they'll get it for you. And they are just tremendous, and when I get, uh, family and friends from out of town, I always brag about our libraries. But there's one thing that myself and a few other people disagree with, and that is the chip machines. Uh, I don't know who, uh, we were curious who put them there, who owns them, but why would there be chip machines in the library?
Shut up, pause your time please. Chip machines, are you seeing like bags of chips?
Hmm.
Are you seeing vending machines?
Hmm.
You saying you don't want vending machines there?
Correct.
Because?
Because, um, well, uh, they're messy, I mean, uh, people who eat chips, we all know, they're eaten by our hands, not by spoons. Your hands are greasy, you're gonna touch the keys of keyboard, you're gonna be looking in a book with greasy hands, uh, licking your fingers maybe, um, and it's, uh, it doesn't make sense to me, or, and to, to us.
Are you, uh, pause your time, I'm sorry. Are you seeing like a, uh, are you seeing a lot more messier computers and keyboards?
No, I'm seeing nothing, but, uh, I mean, it's very obvious, chips do, I mean, uh, chips are, is, are a messy treat, or a messy snack.
Is there only chips in there, are there like, aren't like snack bars with their peanuts?
I just seen chips, I mean, I didn't go with magnifying glass, and, um, uh, no one has mentioned to me anything other than chips. Um, they just said, well, I mean, I'm saying chips like, maybe, could be Doritos, could be, you know, potato chips, that type of chip.
Awesome.
Yes, and it makes no sense to me, and to my friends.
I, I can tell you that the good news is, you are right, we do have the best libraries in the world, in the world. And we also have the best library director in the world, we're actually so lucky to have.
Oh, I'm, I.
And we have amazing residents, I live in Syracuse, that raise our, our.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I'm not.
For that, maybe you can have a conversation with our library director who's sitting here in the audience, uh.
Concerning what?
Concerning the chips of any machine.
It's up to him to remove them?
Uh, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna follow his direction in any direction he says, cause he's the director of, of both libraries, correct?
Council Chair, I think it's only allowed in designated areas to put and drink, correct, Director? Round the facility?
You want.
Yup, if you want, you can come out.
Well, uh, I mean, I was, uh, it was mentioned that, you know, children would bring in food anyway. Um, now that makes no sense to me, and, and some others, because, uh, it's just like saying, don't put up a red light, cause you won't stop. You know, um, it, we, America is what it is because of laws and rules, and we follow them. Uh, so I'm sure if he said, don't bring in chips.
Yes, ma'am.
Wouldn't do it, um, but I, I was curious, who owns those machines?
I have no idea.
The vending machine, it's the vending machine company that called, they're gonna put it out.
Let, let's hear, let's hear from, uh,
Okay, so, um, anyway, in terms of vending machines, we've morphed this policy over the years. Um, there was a time when I went to libraries and there was no food, there was no drink, there was no water, there was nothing, but, and that's the policy we enforced for a long time, I'd say about first eight to ten years. Um, but eventually it gets difficult to enforce it for a couple of reasons, one, um, it's tough to tell kids, you can't eat anything, can't eat pretzels, can't eat goldfish, can't eat chips. It gets difficult over time, you know, it's like, people are getting out of school and they want to eat something, um, so it gets difficult to do it for that reason, and also, if you're talking a hundred to a hundred and fifty people in a building, it gets really difficult to enforce equitably throughout, you know, adults, kids, everybody in the building, making sure they don't eat or drink anything. So we moved away from that, and I'd say, it, it was interesting, because I, when I talked to you earlier, Marjorie, I was curious, cause I thought, you know, I thought many libraries had moved away from this policy, and I, so I actually went to websites of different communities, and I found out that about fifty fifth in some libraries that had moved on and some that hadn't. Um, but the biggest issue is that enforcement giving kids something to eat, but I'll say this, we do police a mess. So if somebody leaves a mess, regardless of whether it's a bag of chips, or Coke, or whatever, whatever it is, we tell them to clean it up, or they're not gonna be able to do it in the future, so. Um, but yeah, we take it seriously, we enforce it for a long time, but libraries are just moving towards allowing usually light snacks, like vending machine snacks, and covered beverages, um, but not like warm food, that kind of thing, so.
I mean.
Unless it's a program.
My question to you is, are you seeing a mess, how long have you had these vending machines?
Uh, couple of years.
Are you seeing a change in like a mess, or sticky keyboards, or things like that?
Not really any more than kinda was before, I can't say, you know, it's probably, it's, it probably is increased a bit, I'm not gonna say it's zero.
But I'm sure it's also got business since COVID.
Right, right, so, and, but yeah, that's why we started putting them in, um, just so people had a couple more options. And we had actually had a lot of patrons that asked for them. Um, and, uh, there's even people that want coffee machines and drinks, currently it's just a chip machine, a couple other things, but.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Council Chair.
If you guys wanna have a conversation, I think you two should also have a conversation, maybe exchange numbers or whatnot.
Okay.
That's your Councilman.
A director? Director, um, this is a vending machine company providing these vending machines and restocking them, is.
Yes.
Does, uh, does the library get any, uh, percentage of the profits?
Yes, it was a. Yes, it was a higher percentage. I don't know off the top of my head what it is, but I believe it was like ten or fifteen percent. It's a little higher than the average percentage I've been getting from a lot of other machines. They're pretty Johnny on the spot with replenishing it. I call and within, usually the same day, if they'll either replenish it, or if the machine jams up for whatever reason, they've come and replenished it really quick.
Awesome.
So, they've done a pretty good job with it.
Do you know how much money they generate?
Like sixty, eighty bucks a month. For us, sixty, eighty bucks a month.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll give you thirty more seconds.
Thirty seconds. Yeah, I'm just, I just wanted to say, I totally, I don't agree with that at all. Um, I mean, it's obvious, chips are messy. And it makes no sense to me, and think about it, if, uh, if people go through, I, I'm, that excuse that I can't handle it, it's, uh, we don't want a red light, so take it out and cars can crash. I mean, we have rules, and if you have a rule, they follow it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. How are you, ma'am? I know you asked for an additional minute.
Good evening, everyone.
Three minutes.
Angela Van Agus, on Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Um, first I wanna say, I was wondering why our Airbnb issue isn't on the, uh, agenda this, this week?
Because it had, it needed more time. We couldn't just rush it on air. A week wasn't enough, not even a week.
Okay.
Wednesday to Tuesday wasn't enough, it was less than a week.
Well, I just, I just, it's been a year already. I just want, don't wanna see this falling behind in days.
We also don't wanna rush it too.
Oh, no, why not? We've been through it, but I just, residents are curious what's going on, and I live next door to one, so I just want this taken care of. Um, and then another issue I have, and, and Councilman Sob has been working on it with me, is a home that's next door to me on the other side, a rental home, that since two thousand and seventeen, I paid my six dollars to get the five pages of ordinance violations that's been written up on this home from blight, no CFOs, um, rats, vermin, illegal parking on the grass. Um, the last time I called on them was the sixth of this month, and it took them till Monday to come out and take a look at the property. I just think twenty days is a long time, and being that this is an ongoing problem, I thought I would read a letter that I got from our ordinance department back on January of twenty twenty three um, to respond when the gentleman was parking on his grass in the backyard. And it says, "Good afternoon, the ordinance department never complied this issue out. What happened at court is that the defendant was ordered to pay a compliance fine, and that was the end of the case. We now have a new prosecutor, and along with him, some of the council members are trying to have this corrected at the court's end. This along with several other issues that are still an issue, such as blighted yards, the defendants are only being ordered to pay a court fine, and that's the end of the case." So are we still just allowing people to pay a fine and not fix the issue? What good does it do to give them a fine, and I still gotta look at weeds in my yard that are four feet tall, and bushes that are as high as the power lines? What's going on? Does anybody have an answer?
I do. Ask the administration.
Yeah, if you're at.
Yeah, the mayor's not here.
If you're.
He believes the city. Sorry, Roger, but you know.
No, okay. I mean, if you're asking, no, we, if we do a compliance, they have to show pictures, and they have to show the ordinance officers that they've fixed, um, that they've addressed the issue and fixed the issue.
Okay, if the issue's fixed, then I have pages of ordinances here where I'm complaining about the same thing, and supposedly it says they've complied, and the house is still a mess.
Okay, I don't know if specifically if they haven't cut the grass after they complied two weeks, I don't know, but I will check in and see. Just leave it for me, and I will look at it. I address every one person.
It's not even, it's just about the grass. They were, they actually had somebody come out and cut the grass today. According to the ordinance officer that was out here on Monday, not only they are ordering that bush to be removed up against my privacy fence, because they're starting to pull up my fence, and there's poisonous weeds growing back in there.
I've looked at your property, I've walked your property.
It's fine.
I will take a look at exactly what you know. I've come out, I will come out on the street, I've met residents at their places who've complained about their neighbors, because I believe exactly what you're saying.
Here's Roger, nothing has changed.
Okay.
Five years.
I had a car, I had a car sitting there.
Just like the Cadillac that sits on the corner of Cronin Pass. Flat tires, busted out windows. Five years, reappeared again, you know.
You had one for ten years. I removed with Vince. It's my attention, we got it done within two weeks. I will follow up with what you're saying, and I will talk with ordinance, okay?
And I would like to, um, point out, um, our police department, I like to give you guys kudos, you guys have been out there giving tickets, been seeing you out there catching speeders, violations on garbage cans. Love you guys, you guys are doing a great job, keep up the good work.
We love you, Edge.
Thanks.
While I'm vacation, Edge is gonna watch my dog Sophie, so.
Um, Mohammed Jani, nineteen twenty seven, Evangeline, Dearborn Heights. Um, let me start with a quick story. I have five kids, and I have my baby daughter starting tenth grade this year. And the reason why I'm bringing that up, you guys can do the math. Um, what happened to the crosswalk?
It's, we, um, we approved it a few months ago.
No, I'm sorry, I think it was approved a year ago.
No, actual, the, the construction. Mr. Deep.
Okay, so what's, what's the story? I mean, this, another year started, uh, summer went by, and nothing got done. So I'm here to, I mean, guys, I've been working on this for over fifteen years. This is crazy.
Council, in our presentation, we indicated that this project was, uh, MDOT funded. MDOT puts it out to bid. The last we heard from MDOT, we follow them constantly, is September of this year. They put it out to bid, they managed the construction, it's their project, they're paying for it. It is, it is scheduled for September. We had a grant.
Because I thought you guys got awarded monies, and you had money set aside.
Yeah, but Sir Deep, yeah, I thought it was, yeah.
Um, am I crazy? Wasn't this something that's been going on for years, and?
Yeah, yeah, I thought we got great money.
Set aside? Wasn't money set aside? What happened to the lady who?
Stop, stop, stop.
Let me answer. First, let me give you a question. What happened to the lady that came?
The, the, uh, that was, that was done, so we moved the project further out.
How long ago was that?
I'm not here to answer you, okay? The project is, is we, uh.
Give them some space.
So Jenny, just, uh, direct your question to the Council Chair, please.
Yeah, yeah, direct your current question.
Okay. You authorized the local share of the project, the twenty percent of the, the funding project, so you authorized the local share. The project has always been Sam Cog and, and MDOT funded. Sam Cog's grant funded the project from day one. So we got delayed initially because of the design was not approved by that one woman that took us to MDOT, and we lost the case, so we moved the project further out. But the project has always been funded by MDOT and Sam Cog. So eighty percent, you approve the twenty percent, it's still, it's still the same. The twenty percent is being paid by the city, eighty percent by, uh, the funds. But since they're paying the eighty, they put it out to bid. We said the project was led to be led by MDOT, that's what it means. They put it out to bid, they select the contractor, and they pay the eighty percent. That's what we approved. It's always been the case. It just got delayed because of the site, that's all. We moved it further.
This is the first time I've heard MDOT being involved at all, and I've been.
Mister Jenny. Sir Danny.
Yeah.
Jenny, the good news is, I got a great relationship with MDOT. Um, I mean, when I tell you I have a phenomenal relationship with them, I, I can send the message right out to the Director of MDOT in Lansing, and he'll, and I'll, I'll get you information. Give me until after Labor Day weekend, and I'll tell you exactly what's happening with it, and I'll speak to MDOT myself.
Okay, my question still stands. I.
I don't know.
I've never heard, I'd never heard MDOT being a part of this at all. It was always the city council, and if I recall correctly, we're talking years ago, the city council was putting money aside for this particular project. MDOT was never mentioned. This is the first time I'm hearing about MDOT being mentioned. Second part of this, like I said, money was set aside and approved by the city council at one point. And now we're talking, this is September of twenty twenty five, and this is crap.
To be approved the money, we approved the project.
So I, I, and this lady, bringing up this lady, if I may, when, since I don't direct him, direct the question to you guys, when did that lady, when was that 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 happened? Wasn't it a year ago?
A little less than a year.
Nine months time, it doesn't matter. Point, the point is, it's been dormant. Nobody's doing anything about it. Our kids are still at, at risk. If this guy doesn't take consideration to kids, and he's been sitting on it, then what's his, what's his job? What's his purpose? Our kids are most important, and nothing's gotten done over the last fifteen years.
Thank you, Mister Jenny. Mister Jenny, let's, let's talk. I, I just sent a message real quick, just, uh, telling Adam from MDOT that I'd like to speak with him, him and Brad. Welcome. How you doing, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Janet, and.
Big name, the city resident?
Okay, Janet Duncan, uh, address forty-two hundred Cornell.
Just, uh, okay.
Okay. Um, thank, thank you for a chance to speak. I'm gonna kinda follow up with this lady in the back at the pink outfit. I didn't catch your name.
Angela Van Agus.
Um, we're having the same issues on Cornell Street. Um, we have neighbors that, the, the ordinance officers have been informed, they go to the house, they talk with them, we've seen them give citations. I feel like your ordinance people and your police officers are doing a heck of a job. But maybe your fines aren't high enough. Maybe these people aren't getting hit hard enough in the pocket because they keep doing the same thing. Somebody needs to revisit all this and double these fines. I, I don't like to see anybody pay a lot of money, but I'm tired of looking at five foot weeds, not being able to look in my, in my backyard and see other people's backyards tore up, weeds, mud, dirt. You know, we've had to put up another privacy fence on the other side of our yard because our neighbor's yard was atrocious. It just, and it puts you in a bad mood. We have a nice deck. We'd like to sit out there. But we sit out there and get mad, because we've called, we know the ordinance guys been there, and they're not doing a thing about it. You know, these people are working their butts off. And these residents don't care. They don't care at all. And we don't have a home, better home than garden home, but we do mow the grass, trim it, we do take the weeds down. We all live by Home Depot. You know, really, what does it take? You know, so I'm just asking you to revisit your, your fines, look over your thing, and we're, when the ordinance person pulls up, let them be a little scared. When the cop pulls up, because the guy's parked in his front yard for three weeks, he'll think, oh, man, I got it again, and this time it's two hundred bucks. Something, something's gotta change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you do me a favor? There's a form up there, can you fill it out?
Mm-hmm.
Um, fill that form out, just give a brief description, uh, and you can hand it over to our, our Council Secretary. And what I'd like is, uh, Director Laffive is on here.
He's on vacation.
Or he, I think he's gone for, from out till September third. Uh, you know, granted, being the holidays, so they, they might be off, and then are, are, are actually are, uh, the best, uh, you know, one of the, one of, one of the best employees at City Hall, also.
Yeah, you got a great bunch.
On administrative leave, and.
They're working.
I don't know the details on that, but, uh, unfortunate. But what I can tell you is, get that over, we'll have, uh, George put us in an email, and then we'll start taking a look at it. You also have to put in this email that you grant permission for an ordinance officer to come into your backyard to be able to see the neighbor's backyard.
Oh, yeah, he's.
Because we're not allowed to be able to enter your backyard, but before you step away, Councilman Sob had something also that he'd like to say.
Well, we, we did. We've asked the administration to, and the legal department, to revisit the fees, because when you do hit them in your pocket.
Mm-hmm.
The, well, the problem is, is that once this ticket, this resident gets to court, the city attorney and the prosecutors either give them a compliance fee or let them go right out the door. That's the problem. Because I personally, and Angela and everybody would tell you, I go to, go to residents' homes and see their neighbors. It's absolutely disgusting.
Yeah, it is.
It's a shame.
I know, our taxes keep going up, which I understand why, but, you know, you look around at everybody else, and you're like, well, how come my taxes keep going up when my area, the place where I live, looks terrible?
Hopefully soon, the ordinances are gonna change.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Chair. Uh, I began the similar complaints, ma'am, and I think the city was been doing, they give them a timeframe to take care of the property. If not, they'll send somebody to cut the grass and tag that bill on their taxes.
Yeah, correct, twenty-four hours. I think they give about eight days right now.
Or what you do is you send out a notice to the entire city that you've all been put on notice.
That'd be great.
Now you can give a twenty-four hour notice after that.
Anything will help.
Yep, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone, Zohair Abdelhamd.
I know you asked for an additional minute, so I'll.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mister Chairman, just to, you know, to follow on what they said. In Dearborn, they give you a notice one week. If you don't cut your grass, they send the company who cuts the grass inside the city. Then they send you three hundred and seventy-five to five hundred dollars bill to pay it, because they cut the grass plus administration fee. The city makes money actually on that. And, uh, if it doesn't, uh, get paid, it goes on the tax roll on your property. And that's what we should follow, so people, when they see three hundred or four hundred dollars cut, they will make sure it is cut and never happen again. The second thing I noticed in one of the issue on the agenda, there is a contract which is, uh, recommended to be extended until twenty twenty-nine. I would recommend highly to this body that you do not agree to any contract whatsoever which exceeds January first, twenty twenty-six. We have a new administration coming, and they should have the courtesy to decide the next four years what's going to happen in our city, who's going to get the contract, and why it is extended until twenty twenty-nine. Came to my attention that our, uh, absent mayor have given contracts to people, especially at the police department illegally, without approval of the city council, and which exposed the city to millions of dollars in lawsuits, which I don't know the exact number yet. It will come out. So I be very careful with anything this mayor suggests. Any contract which exceed January first, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
I hope you be very careful with what you approve. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? The honorable, lovely Rose Trippepi, ladies and gentlemen, round of applause. Come on, we can do better than that. Let's give Rose a round of applause here. Hey, Ro.
Be careful, be careful.
You know, Rose, Rose is, uh, forgivable. She's everybody's favorite. She's like everybody's godmother.
Grandmother?
Yeah.
No, I'm his grandmother.
Aunt Mother Godmother.
Rose Trippepi, Tulane Street. I'm not sure if anybody's aware, I only have two of the seniors here, well, three, but two that know the issue. Eaton Center has a gentleman that comes in, disrupts the whole place, um, beats on the piano. He was escorted out and banned. And all of a sudden, he came back two weeks ago and said he was allowed to come back from his attorney. I don't know if Roger knows anything about it.
No.
But his attorney shouldn't be able to tell him what he can do at our center. He now has been banned from the Richard Young Center for washing himself in the washroom with little kids there, nude. So he can't go there. How do we find out, and what can we do to keep him out of Eaton?
Well, so this is a great question, pause your time real quick. You know, clearly sounds like there's probably a mental illness here happening.
He lives right across the street from the building.
Yeah, and, and we wanna make sure that, you know, we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and, and also like, knowing that you guys know that there's something going on here, I think it's, it's the proper communication, you know, reach out to the authorities automatically. I would call nine-one-one, uh, especially if anybody feels in danger or any type of threat. But I think, you know, the administration, look, man, the, the mayor's just gotta be here to hear these things, and then he should be having coordinating with, with the, with the coordinator, having these conversations, I mean.
But his attorney has the authority to tell him, yeah, he can come in?
Who?
Martin's on.
Yeah, or if, if Martin is on, we could talk to the Director of our Parks and Recreation.
He'd be here.
Council Chair.
Uh, please set the record that Councilman Coniston, the Honorable Councilman Coniston is present here with us. But.
That gentleman doesn't have an attorney. He wears, has a beard, lives across from, uh, Eaton.
He lives across from Eaton, but I don't think he has a beard. Does he have a beard? Yeah.
Does he have a beard?
But he's, he's just crazy. He doesn't have an attorney.
Well, he says his name is Smith. His name is not Smith, because he just signs it on the book. That's not his true name.
Okay. Can we hear from, uh, Martin? Was he made aware of this?
I believe he is. I thought he'd be here tonight.
Older, older gentleman, about five, nine, five-ten.
I don't know. Let's, uh, can you unmute? Director, are you able to, there he is. He's unmuted.
Very, very well, very aware of this individual. I can tell you that for sure. In fact, sitting on my desk is a file that I've had to, uh, start with him because there are numerous complaints. Uh, we've, we've already gone over this with our corporate counsel, and we've set up a code of conduct that we posted in the buildings. So we have a little bit more leverage on them, and, uh, we're, we're following a whole process of, of collecting all this data um, to, uh, in fact, I, I get almost daily, um, to try to.
Nothing from the audience. Please, if you wanna speak, please speak outside.
Right, to try to, uh, take care of. Right, to try to, uh, take care of this problem. It's, it's been, uh, quite a handful.
Um, uh, Martin, were you able, Director, were you able to, have you reached out to the police department on this, uh, incident yet?
Uh, no, no, we haven't. I mean, most of these.
Let's get, let's get the authorities involved. I think this is not something we need to tread lightly on. I think the first thing that should have been done was reached out to the police department, especially if what I'm hearing is, you know, uh, he was nude and, 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 and at the Richard A Young Center. Like, um, I, I'd like you to reach out to the police chief. I'd like this to be reported and there definitely needs to be a reference number here and this needs to be reported. Uh, we should not be collecting data. We should be re, reaching, reaching out to the authorities and letting them know what's happening here.
Councilor Chair.
Hang on one second, Councilman, I heard you. I got you. Is, is, can, can we stay on top of that, Martin?
Yes, yes.
Do you have the gentleman's information?
Yes, I have all of his information.
Please reach out to the police department, uh, even today. Send a quick email, uh, on this incident, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman.
There, I think this gentleman has been calling me and I know what you're saying. He lived across the street from Eaton.
He lives right across the street.
And didn't he have a spouse or a girlfriend die? I got a call from him the other day. I'm going to detail. Um, he now lives in Taylor, so he's no longer a resident of Dearborn Heights, according to him.
We still see him come. He takes stuff out of the center. He'll steal books and takes them across the street. I was sitting in the bus the other day.
He lied.
And, uh, he took the books into his house.
Yeah, cause he's, yeah.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that some seniors are getting to be afraid.
No, I don't blame him because I.
I can't hear you.
Was that way just talking to him.
Oh, he came in today again.
I was that way just talking on the phone to him. I was kind of getting.
I haven't been around the last couple of months, so I, maybe I need to go back in there because I, I did scare him away last time. I, I don't know, but I hate to see them being afraid.
No, it.
Yeah, because I get it.
Cause I understand that his tone and how rough if he gets on the phone, it scares you.
Okay, then I just guess I need to go back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Are you speaking as a resident?
Uh, I'm first of all speaking as a councilman. Tom Wensel, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Um, Councilor Chair, I, I, I'm sure you agree with me that, uh, every residence vote in the upcoming election in November is an important vote and sacred to them. And every vote should count. We've heard that before. Every vote should count. And, uh, it would be unfair if someone made a vote for a candidate and that candidate decided not to accept the seat. That being said, because I can't get my name off the ballot, uh, according to the clerk, like we talked about that, um, I am not running for reelection to Dearborn Heights City Council. And I do not want the residents to waste their vote. Your vote is the only way, one of the only ways that you have a voice in this city. Your vote, that's something that no one can take away from you. You can't negotiate it. You can't argue about it. Your vote is your vote. So do not waste your vote and vote for me in November election. Um, I've been, I've been on city council for eight years, two terms. Been involved with the city for 25 years. Um, in the last eight years, I've been fighting for change and not much has happened. As you can tell, everybody's saying, you know, coming up here, hey, it's been 10 years, the same things happen over and over. Um, I've got so much energy to exert in a day. And I spend, if I have five gallons of energy and I'm wasting a gallon of that, spinning my wheels, not getting anything accomplished on city council. I love being on here and I appreciate everyone that's supported me in the past. And I'd like to take that gallon and put to good use. I'm not leaving. You probably see more of me. I'll be up here on this podium a lot, beginning of the meetings and after the meetings. But please tell your friends, your neighbors, come November election, do not vote for Tom Wensel. That's me. Do not vote for Tom Wensel for city council. There's other candidates that are more worthy of this position. And I might be back, I don't know, but I am, my, I, right now, my family needs me more and other things I'm involved with the community need more, um, need me more and I can be more productive in, in that part of the community. Um, and now I'm like to speak as, um, Dearborn Heights resident, Tom Wensel, Tulane Street. This Saturday, August 30th, the nonprofit Jamie's Kids, which I'm president of, is hosting Second Annual Family Fun Day. It's a day full of activities which include free barbecue, picnic, balloon and magician clown bounce houses, music by Divinity 3X, face paint, rock paint, raffle prizes, cakewalk, free drinks, make your own ice cream sundae, golf clinic, soccer clinic, lacrosse clinic, hourly limbo contest and more. And it's 100% completely free. We had originally offered it to the seniors for everything free, but because of the response I've had through people that want to help out, we are able to offer this whole event, food, everything, 100% completely free to the public. It's being held at, at Swapka Park, 5499 McKinley Street in Dearborn Heights. Hope to see everyone there Saturday from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. Thank you. And don't forget, don't vote for Tom Wensel.
Well, I will say, Councilman, um, you have served the city for 25 years. Uh, I'm not gonna say as a councilman, I'm saying you have served the residents of Dearborn Heights from the planning commission to the zoning board, to Jamie's Kids, to the councilman, all the great stuff that you've done. And, uh, if you're, if, you know, to see you and Councilman Constant wanting to take a step back and saying, time for others to lead, um, you have led great things in too many years and I think you have a lot of respect. So, uh, either way, Councilman, uh, I, I, I respect your decisions and all your future endeavors and somebody that has served for Dearborn Heights, we're, we're not gonna, not appreciate that, you know? Uh, I can talk about when the former police chief was walked out, didn't have his proper retirement. That bothers me. Regardless of how you feel about Mark Myers, Mark Myers served the city for 30 years. And, you know, regardless of how people feel or how you feel, um, I think there should still be some type of old man retirement for you and Mark. I don't know. Um, but.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. Yeah. No. Um, so I, I wish you all the best in all the future endeavors in choosing, putting family before. Everybody is actually the right decision. And if you feel like you need to put your family first, I, I respect you because, you know, that's the conversation me and my wife have at home all the time. Second that this is gonna interfere with my family and my children, I'll hang it up as my family comes first. Councilor Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Chair.
I would like to also echo whatever you just said for Councilman Wensel. I would like to thank you for all the years of service, Councilman.
Thank you.
We learned so much from you and, uh, I salute you for all the time you put in. And, uh, I mean, I hate to see you go to not to be with us, but, um, hopefully I'm here again. But, uh, uh, but, you know, I do respect what you just said, family comes first and, uh, God bless you and God bless your family.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilman, uh, what, you said you wanted to say something?
I'm good. I'm, I'll be saying more. I've, I've got four more months.
No, no, you said Councilor Chair and I went to Councilman Ahmad first.
Oh, no, no, I said, thank you, Councilor. Thank you.
Oh, oh, I thought you were saying Councilor Chair, like you want to speak.
Oh.
Um.
Well, if you want me to, I'll talk.
Please, please. Make these four months easy, please, Councilman. All right, anyone else in the audience?
We do have one.
We have, uh, one from Margaret. I'm assuming it's Margaret King.
There you go.
How you doing? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Um, I was just wanting to know if we have an update of the project that was supposed to be started before the kids went back to school. I know Crestwood's back in school, Dearborn's back in school. Um, just wanting to know about the school zone safety project. And also too, um, Mr. Janey was speaking about the money that you put aside, Mo, if I am right, Mr. Janey. Do we have an update?
About the Joey Smith initiative? I think that was the money he was referring to.
I think so too.
And the administration did not.
Oh, he's shaking his head, no.
No, no.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Janey. Um, but do we have an update, um, regarding the school zone safety when that project is supposed to be starting?
During announcements, I will ask that question to Mr. Deep. How does that sound?
You're awesome, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I do want to just recognize, maybe Madam Clerk can do it. I know I usually don't do this, but, uh, an, an amazing individual that works on our elections every year is at Kenfield, one of the busiest and. She does a phenomenal job. Maybe our clerk can recognize you because she hears you here in the audience today.
Susan Regal, she's our chair for Precinct 10.
Yes.
Cause we're switching around the numbers now. It used to be, uh, she's a, yes, and she is a phenomenal chair.
And, and.
And welcome to her city council meeting.
And I don't know how long she's been doing it for, but I can say that the first time that I ever voted, I ran into her and I don't want to, you know, put it out there, but she's been doing a phenomenal job and thank you for everything that you do. Very much. Vince, Vince, you got something to say? Oh, here we go. I thought we were about to walk away, but here comes Vince.
You dye your hair, Vince?
Prepare to get lit up. What's that?
You dye your hair?
No.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. Like, we got some good laughs today.
Okay, that was just lack of air, that's all. Um, on the agenda here, uh, shoot, I lost it. Um, the contract for the parking lot. Can we get that approved so we can get the ball rolling on this place? I mean, it would be nice for the, uh, city to start making some revenue and for Mr. Issa to get some revenue rolling in here. I mean, come on now, let's get this thing patched up, please, something get going. You know, we missed out, we missed out on I don't know how many thousands of dollars this past weekend when we had Heinz Cruise. When the golf course backs right up the Heinz Drive, that could have been a major, uh, anti-car show right then and there. How much money could the city have run?
I'm sick of I smell so many nice cars.
You know, it's amazing how many nice cars went through Heinz. And how many miles of Heinz Road is in Dearborn Heights? The majority of it.
Thank you.
It's 17 miles long. So come on, let's get this ball rolling. Let's not drag our asses anymore.
All right, let's, let's.
All right.
I don't want to get yelled at for your first amendment right, but let's not swear. You have the right to do that.
Okay.
I don't want Rachel sending me a message or giving suicide email.
You know what Rachel can do? You know?
Thanks, Vince.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the audience? Anyone else from Zoom? Moving on. Next up, fund transfers and current claim.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Sabat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claim in, uh, ACH and wire transfer six through one, six dash one through six dash 16 and six dash 18 through six dash 43 as.
Second.
Um, thank you. Motion made by Councilman Sabat, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that? Um, Chair, can I ask?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, you want to go ahead?
No, I was looking.
I was just gonna ask if I can have somebody give me a breakdown on what the United States Geological Survey is on and what it was and it's at $16,000. Um, I'd love to hear from this. Did this go out for bid? It did not go out for bid? Why didn't it go out for bid? Did we accept this contractor? What's going on here? Why are we spending $16,000? I don't know what it is.
The Councilor Chair, um, US, I know what it is. I know what it is. He's showing it to me. Uh, the USGS is the United States Geological Survey. It's a government agency that mon, that places monitors on flood areas. So in Dearborn Heights, we have two monitors, one on Beach Inkster and, and Joe Inkster and, uh, Inkster, I'm sorry, Inkster and Ekor's Creek and one on the north end on the Rouge River. So basically what you do, these are, these are the monitors that, um, um, track flood level. We use them quite a bit. And this is an annual contract with the government that we've entered to the last 14 years that I know of. Um, so we pay for these monitors and anyone in our city, including ourselves, can go at any time, 24/7 and want to watch instant, uh, water level, um, issues with the flood. So it is just a service. It's a government agency. You don't go out to bed. Uh, nobody else provides that service but them, so.
So is this the only person that does the survey is the United States?
Yeah, it's a, it's a government agency. You have their own website.
You know, when I do my backup research, I'm like, hey, I don't see this. This is foreign to me, so I had to.
It is, so we've, we've done, we've entered into it many, you know, repeatedly.
Yeah, March, March 25th, 2025 was the last time we entered the agreement, motion 25154. And we annually renew this contract. It helps with the flooding tracking.
Okay. Councilor Chair, why is? Excuse me, sir? What's that? Councilman Wansel?
Uh, Director, uh, do we maintain that facility or is it?
No, so if you go out on the river, actually I stop every now and then. What you'll see, it's a solar collector, a scanner, like a laser. Um, and we don't do any maintenance. It's all included in 16,000. And if you have any issues like false reading, sometimes a log gets under it and then it reads false. So when you look at the draft, it shows false numbers, like we haven't had rain in a while. And now all of a sudden I'm seeing they go out and take care of it. So we do no maintenance. No.
So thi, this is, this is a, 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 uh, machine, so to speak, that, that monitors the level of the creek, the water, the body of water.
So, and it also tracks, so the graph will give you, so if you go on the website, um, and then, and then, uh, select Dearborn Heights site, it'll show you where. And then you hit on that thing and it will show you instantly and then last month, last year. And then if there's any bad weather anticipated, like four inches of rain, it will show the, the draft, you know, the graph will show instance. So if you wanted to be aware, to send notices to the public or do something when it hits, I know on the Ekor's Creek, I tried to track it, anything less than eight. Uh, but sometimes we, we hit more and we know we hit 11 before.
Thank you, thank you.
But we don't maintain it, no.
Yeah, we, we've had it for a few years.
I should have a question for you. I'll ask you in a second. You can just stay up there. Okay. Any other questions?
Councilor Chair, um, yeah, uh, Chris LaPointe, he posts things, uh, you know, quite frequently on, uh, on the, uh, Facebook 411. And I just noticed that today I ran, read over his comments. He said that there were several things on the, uh, claims that would, would, uh, would exceed the, uh, uh, the ledger on, on, on some of the, uh, items that, um, are you familiar with any of those? It exhausts or go past the amount that's, uh, budgeted?
Um, those would be from last year and they're not part of these claims. These claims are put in new this whole year. So these ones won't have any over budget items. But I, the majority of these items, they're not gonna be over budget. And if they are over budget, it's, um, basically they're, they're miscoded on the invoice numbers, which we would catch when we enter them into the BSN system. Inbox numbers, which we would catch when we enter them into the B S N A system.
So you're saying every claim, as far as you know, will not exhaust that bu- that, that budgeted amount?
As far as I know, uh, these claims, none of these will exhaust the budget.
Not the budget, but.
The budget line, the GL number, to my knowledge.
Councilman, do you have a list of them?
I did, you know, I just read it quickly before the meeting and I was hoping, you know, at the last meeting, I was saying that. We should maybe hire this guy to, to do research for us to go over the stuff, because he's pretty thorough and, and you know, every time I checked. Backchecked, it's, it's pretty accurate too.
Yeah.
He does. I, you know, I mean, if he's on here, he's on the. Zoom.
Is he on there, Crystal Point? No, but this also isn't, this isn't public comments, Councilman.
I know, didn't, I don't know.
So if you could pull it up, you can.
I, yeah, I, I, no, it's, it's, we gotta, we gotta move on, so I'll just.
Thank you.
I'll try to be more, a little bit more thorough next time.
Any other discussions?
We know, it's in memory.
Do you have anything else? Yeah. Any other discussion?
We already passed the public comment.
I'm, I'm sorry, public comments are, are done at this point. You can speak again towards the end. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Robert Kason?
Yes.
Tim Wenzel?
No.
Hassan Sap?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Mo Baydun?
Yes.
Motion Carrie six one.
Thank you. Next up, we have considerations of bid. Intra-comptroller Baydun bid award Warren Valley Parking Lot resurfacing.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dubois City Council awarded the bid for the Warren Valley Parking Lot, the first resurfacing. Um, for asphalt specialist LLC. Or somebody else that the council would recommend for a total cost not to exceed their respective bid. And return the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account one oh one. Dash seven five three dash nine three two zero zero zero, which will be accompanied by an amendment. Coming from the general funds uh, balance equal to costs incurred by the city as outlined in seven dash eight.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council Chair. Mr. Baydun, I want to thank you for the tally sheet. It's very professional, easy to read and go through it, so I do appreciate. Your effort on this. Uh, but I wanted to see, uh, I know you mentioned the school portion in here. Did we have an approval for the school?
Uh, Council Chair wanted to bring it uh, to this council meeting with this type of spec, and then if you guys approve it. Then we can bring it to the school board to see if they will, they'll approve it. Now. Um, the motion does not say contingent on the school board's approval, um, given that this is like. A mid-grade, mid-tier solution for what we want. Uh, we want to go back out to bid for something even cheaper than this, so it's either we have to pay the entire cost. Or the school agrees to pay the portion that was somewhat discussed in the meetings prior.
And my second question is, you have alternate one, two, and three. Is that something that we need to add to the?
Mr. Deep, can you speak up on this?
He can speak up on it, but alternate three is landscaping around, so it's just a grass area. In reality, that doesn't affect. The parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Alternate two is the curb drains in the driveway that allows for. The water mitigation.
Yeah, so.
So the base bid is the two inch as per your direction, so we scrapped, revised the drawings, two inch throughout. The uh, the alternate one, the driveway itself, if you look at the driveway itself. We put an alternate because two inches are not going to withstand the delivery trucks and the heavy use, the driveway use.
So you're talking, I'm sorry, the driveway is probably the way from the street all the way to the building, that's the driveway?
To the building, the driveway itself, we put an alternate to make it four inches. So the driveway itself, because the, the potholes currently are heavier than, they're bigger than two inches. So your, 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 the driveway is the most concentrated load bearing member. So we put an alternate for the driveway. And then alternate two was basically the, if you look at the, all the islands in the drive, you've got missing cur- uh, uh, curbs. They're missing curbs. They're broken, gone, been there for a long time. So we put an alternate to repair the broken curbs. So then the final product will be, you know, consistent. And then the alternate three is what he was talking about, the repairs, the landscaping, there was uh, constantly damaged. Now, uh, it is designed so you can award. A la carte. Base, base plus one, base plus two, so depending on the cost, that's the way that the, the bids are designed. So, up to you.
So I have a question. If you go extra two inches on the driveway, is that going to affect the rest of the parking lot, like water wise?
You're milling, sure, so you maintain this.
What's that?
You mill first, you mill.
Okay.
So you will mill it and then place it. So basically, the top, the elevations, the final elevation will be the same, so.
I know the way I look at it, I think it needs to have the three alternate to have a good job, at least.
You can get away with alternate one and two.
Yeah. So we're trying to come up with a product, at least, um, uh, the heavy sections, the driveway. Is to withstand, because I, I understand all the deliveries is going to take place. The school buses are going to go there. Delivery trucks are going to go.
School buses are not going to go there.
Well, I've, I have pictures for those buses if you like to see them, so.
School buses are not going to go there.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, here's, here's the vice president of the school, of the school board right here.
I, I watched, I took pictures.
They've been going there, but no. Uh, Mr. Deep, for the alternate three for the grass, you think we can go with a. If, I know this is, this bits are from the asphalt companies, correct?
Absolutely, all of them.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying from the same company to change the, to replace, restore the grass around.
Yes, sir, yes.
You think we can get maybe for alternate three, go to a different company, maybe we can guess, no.
Sure.
You for bed?
Sure. Yep, and you can do, what you can do is probably not do that this year. Wait till all the construction are done and come back in the spring and say. Some, um, you know, repairs or, um, um, you know. Repair the damage, but yeah, you can, you can do without it, absolutely.
Yeah. And if they, because also if these contractors damage any of the, of the current grass. They can be the ones to be held responsible for that. We shouldn't be held responsible.
Yes.
Any other discussions?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Thank you. Um, a couple of things, uh, one of the residents spoke and ki- kinda indicated that. Parking lot was a reason why the, the facility isn't open, yeah, and that's, that's, that's completely false. Um. Uh. Mr. Deep, you, you're gonna mill? Are you gonna mill this now? It's gonna be milled?
Two inches, yes.
Two inches down? Have you done any tests? Maybe there's only two inches of asphalt there.
We corded it, we corded it.
The whole, the whole area?
I corded the whole thing. So before we even designed the four inch repair. I sent, we corded it, so we have a core of all the existing, so we know what's out there. We know where we, we, we have to go. And we also, um, uh, put a, a pay item to uh, patch, so we don't just put an overlay. We mill, we patch the stuff, because like I said, some of those potholes are thicker than the two or the four inches. We have some big potholes. So you don't just put an overlay. You fix them, you level them, and then you, um, um, maintain it. And one critical thing you need to keep in mind. That this place is probably the only place I know in Dearborn Heights that doesn't flood in heavy rain. It is, it drains beautifully. It's, it's actually a great drainage system.
I stop you right there?
I like to keep it.
Drain right into the golf course. Can, can I stop you right there?
Yes.
There's a video circulating. Where everything was dri- was, everything was flooded. The whole entire parking lot was flooded and, and it's from this past weekend. This past rain, the whole parking lot was flooded.
Okay, so.
I have it, I'll show you. I actually am going to send it to you. I'm going to send it to you.
All right.
I didn't know what I was looking at, but somebody sent it to me and they said, Mr. Deep said that this parking lot doesn't flood.
Doesn't.
It's all flooded, it's all underwater.
This weekend?
Yes.
The short rain?
Yeah, very small rain, very little, all underwater.
I understand. All right.
Yeah, I got a video.
We got videos.
Flood, Mr. Deep.
So, so we, we do have drainage system, w- w- we're just going to restore the pavement at this point, so. Um, it's, that's what this project's for.
By the way, it's, it's always flooded. Always flooded.
Council Chair?
Yeah. You know, and I, I was over there the other day and I drove like the entire parking lot and there's some areas that haven't been parked on in ten years. You know, they're, they're not bad, there's a lot of weeds going through and this has not been maintained. And uh. I was driving through there and there's some pretty rough spots, maybe, you know, areas that could be cut out and replaced, you know, ten, by twenty feet or something. Uh, that being said, I've been driving down the streets of Dearborn Heights and I've drove over worse roads. Than this golf course parking lot.
Yeah.
And this is a private business, even though the city is liable to maintain it, that means just patch it up as, as necessary. Not redo it, maintain it. Uh, we have residents that pay taxes. That'll never golf at that golf course or go to that banquet center that have issues in front of their homes, cracked streets. On Chris Street in Dearborn Heights, two years ago. The city went through, uh, either through themselves or the homeowner paying to have trees removed between the sidewalk and the street. Almost twenty trees in a three-block area. And those stumps are still sitting there rotting away. The reason is, we don't have the money to dig out them stumps. But we're asking for at least bare minimum half a million dollars. And I know how this goes. I've been at city council a long time. It's five hundred thousand now, but then four months later, you know what? Ran into a little problem, you know, we're gonna have to do a change order for two hundred thousand. And oop, you ran into another problem. And before you know it, you know, it's a million dollars. Or maybe more. I'm all about getting this business opened up because it's been a long time. And we haven't gotten any money from the banquet hall. But we have from the golf course, which is a, which is a plus. Um. I don't want to spend a penny on this parking lot. I mean, I drove through it. In my wife's car and it wasn't like blah, 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 blah. It was boom, 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 you know? It was, it was drivable. I mean, we can't, we can't afford as a city to have a state-of-the-art, beautiful parking lot. You go out, uh, this parking lot in City Hall is not the best parking lot. You walk up the sidewalk and the sidewalk has to be ground down because they're so uneven, people are tripping on it. But we're gonna in- invest, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousand dollars for a private business. That most, every taxpayer in the city of Dearborn Heights will never visit. And uh, one thing I noticed when I went by there, the sign is taken down. It's, it's still there, but all the signage is removed. Painted white. The sign, signs out, the circle's out, and I want to know what's, what's, what's the situation with the sign?
Well, well, Council, we're discussing the pavement. You can, we can talk about the signs after.
Okay, okay. This is.
Council Chair.
Gone before the sign?
That's, yeah, that's not part of this. We're, we're, this project is just for the pavement. And, and, and to say that we're not replacing the pavement, we're doing a mill two inch. So it, it's an overlay per the council direction, so.
By, by the way, I also want to just respond. Councilman, you said at the last meeting that when you read the contract, because you read the contract, we have to maintain. Uh, you have to maintain the parking lot.
Right.
Milling it two inches is maintaining the parking lot. It is not ripping the parking lot and fixing the parking lot. Unfortunately, I agree with you.
Repairing the parking.
And unfortunately, I agree with you, we were, we were put in, in a terrible decision on, on this, on this uh, uh. Uh, contract. A contract that you didn't negotiate, I didn't negotiate, that. Ultimately. Administration negotiated, right? You can't get mad at, you can't get mad at the tenant. Hang on one second, please, sir.
Just for the record.
Can't get mad at, you can't get mad at the Isa brothers. At, at the end of the day, the Isa brothers are going to do what's in their best interest. The city. It failed at doing what was best in their best interest. Um, but unfortunately, this is where we are standing today. And while it's a hard pill to swallow, including for me, this sucks. You know, because if, if there's something that I'd like to put five hundred thousand dollars to, figure out our trees, should. Figure out the sycamore trees in the city. That's what I'd like to see the money go to, but. We have a legal obligation, because where you say things like. Well, it's going to start at five hundred, then it's going to go to two hundred thousand, then an extra hundred thousand. You're right. Because we've seen that happen, an extra ten percent, an extra ten percent. The reality is this, so we go to court. Right? We're not open, we're losing money. Say the contractor says, hey, I don't want to start paying it in because the city is running me through, they're not following on their contracts. We go to the, to court. The court comes back and says you have to pay it, and then they come back and say, well, I lost damages because I wasn't open, and so now I want to sue the city. We're still paying for it and we're losing more money.
Council Chair.
Well, you know, I'm gonna go to Councilman Sob.
I'm not done, yeah, I was still, you know.
Well, no, you were talking about something and I asked to speak, let me speak, so I'm gonna go to Councilman Sob and then I'll go back to you. Councilman Sob.
Council Chair. Again. Hate to bring up Debbie Downer, Downer here, but seems like it's over and over, we're targeting businesses. And it's from a single council individual, over and over and over. Problem is, the individuals spent over eight million dollars into this property that you're now calling a private business. It's a city-owned facility. Whether you agree with it or not, just to put on the record, Mr. Isa, Mr. Isa next month has wedding bookings there. And if we don't do the parking lot based to his contract when he opens up, he's going to sue the city for damages and losses to the venues he has there. That's number one. Number two, it's kind of amazing how we just flipped the story backwards, that while I drive there. And the parking lots, that, that parking lot is horrible. That parking lot is absolutely horrible. Horrible. And the thing is that it's in the contract. It's in the contract. And you gotta fulfill the contracts. If Mr. Isa goes out for bid and does it on his own, whatever he decides to do and pay, that's going to cost us probably double. So the city has an obligation. To fix the parking lot, and as for saying, probably no Dearborn Heights resident will visit the golf course, that's an absolute false statement. That parking lot on the weekends absolutely full, and during the day. Maybe if you don't golf and don't come to the north end, it's a different story. But it's full of Dearborn Heights residents. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman, once you, did you still add something?
Well, I, there was, there was a study done. Before the golf course changed, uh, concessionaire or, or, lea- tenant changed hands. And it, it was uh, less than ten percent of the residents Dearborn Heights used the golf course.
Sixty percent.
You, what'd you say, Council?
Sixty percent now, sixty percent resident.
I can tell you I golf there.
Sixty percent?
Yes.
No way. Six out of ten people?
I've talked to Jason.
And, no.
Guys, no.
Now, anyway.
He's lost in his work.
Anyway, I mean, I, I mean, please. I didn't say, I, I didn't say that. The, the building was a private. It, it, I didn't say it wasn't owned by the city. I said that the business there, the business run out of our building is a private business.
Yeah, but there was like that with the old concessionaires as well.
No, no.
Yeah. It was, but yeah.
That was our, our business.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, yeah.
No.
Yeah, he was, he, he was a concessionaire.
He was still a leasing.
Concessionaire.
Point of order, he was a concession.
No, he was a concessionaire. It's different than a leasing.
You're right, this is the contract that we're in.
I know, but I'm saying, my thing is, is I'm all about, you know, getting the parking lot in, in working order. Flatten it out, patch some holes that you need to be patched. Let, let's do the, the bare minimum it takes to get this in good condition. Like we treat our residents, giving them the bare minimum. To fix their roads and the bare minimum to cut down their trees. And the bare minimum for every public service, the bare minimum for street sweeping. The bare minimum for everything, the bare minimum we can do to provide police protection. And, but we're going to give one entity the ultimate. You know, resurface the whole thing. I mean, I have nothing against it, bro. Nothing at all. All, all I, I, I am, I'm, I'm waiting for that place to open. You know, because of the contract, I mean, but maintain and repair by Webster's dictionary are two different meanings. Maintain means keep it op- keep it operable. R- repair means to repair it. And in the contract, it says maintain, so you fix the potholes as good as you can, flatten them out, get your little steamrollers out there. That, and maybe present something to city council with a four-inch overlay of the, the driveway, brand new. I mean, but, but for, you know, potentially a million dollars? I mean, we've already, we've already.
It's not a million dollars.
Hang on, put of order, one meaning.
That facility, we, you know, with the golf course and everything, we putting there four million dollars into it, it's taxpayers' money. And when that contract was brought before city council, the administration said. I'm putting this out for bids and it will not cost the city one penny. His exact words. And it would end up costing us.
Exact words were those?
Bill Bosse's.
Yeah, so he filled out his today.
I know, when he, when he brought the contract, he says, this, this is a RFP. It's all this stuff's got to be done to want zero pennies being paid by the city. The concessionaire or the leasing will pay for everything. That's what he said to us, and that's, we're, we're, we're misled. And, and we came time to vote. It was a six to one vote. I voted no, because it wasn't a good contract.
It was actually, uh, it was actually wasn't four to one.
No, six to one.
Here, no, it wasn't.
Hmm.
Councilman, Councilman Ahmad wasn't even here. He was out of, out of the.
No, I mean, the vote.
Yeah.
At that time.
He wasn't here. He, he, Councilman Ahmad, that it was, was out of the country.
Five to one?
Yeah.
And no, and I believe. One no.
Is me. One no vote.
Okay.
Very.
Guys, we have a motion on the table here.
You know, we can't spend this much money. I mean, we've got so many problems. We had a special meeting before this where we were negotiating something that's very critical of the city. And we couldn't come up with the money. And this is. No, I yeah, I think you're doing a great job, Wes.
I know. Hey, hey, nothing from the audience.
No, I mean, I have this place open.
Houseman, houseman, enough. Hang on one second. Let me get a control of the order of the meeting. Hang on for a second. Please, one second.
Just one second, council.
Sir, please, I'm asking you point of order for a second. I'm gonna give it back to you. Please, point of order.
Please.
Please, point of order, sir. Please, please. Hey, guys, we're not doing this. Please, one second. I'm gonna let you speak. Can you just give me a minute? Please, one second. Mr. Isa, nothing from the audience, guys. Nothing from the audience. Councilman, I'm gonna let you finish up, but you've said the same thing ten times repetitively about how you feel about it. I'm gonna give you thirty seconds to wrap this up.
Yep, okay.
Please.
That's one of the reasons I'm. I'm getting moving away from this because my the the logical opinions I have are just. What on the wayside? I have nothing against him, Osama Isa.
Yeah, you do.
Personally, I have nothing against the man.
The audience.
I have nothing against the man. I I I praise him for his businesses he has. This is not anything to do with me or him. This is money that the the city is putting in. You know, I wish I I wish we had, if we, you know, if we had that money, I'd say, yeah, do it. But we don't have the money.
I agree with you, but guess what? You know what else we don't have? The money to go through litigation.
Why wouldn't we get, if we if we patch the parking lot within reasonable amounts, you know? Spend a hundred thousand dollars and patch up, flatten it all out. You know, and maybe close, maybe close off.
I asked him, by the way, I told Ali Deep to go the cheapest route possible.
Patching, sir, you 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 you, this thing is so beyond its useful life. We've got projects, we try to limit the construction. The rest of it, when you take the machinery over it to patch it, it's deteriorating. It's beyond its useful life. I wanted to originally do four inches at twenty years' fix, and that was expensive. So we came back and we went and at the direction.
I told him maintenance.
Bare minimum, maybe two inches. So base on the top, bare minimum. You can't go be a lot beyond that. It becomes a paint job and it's good for a week. We're trying to get something.
I I want to add on, guys, like, why are we not talking about? Holy cow, this place looks phenomenal. Whether you're there or not, hang on, whether you're there or not. The place is becoming a state of the art and is becoming a place that Dearborn Heights can finally say, we have a facility that's allowed. Whether you like to believe it or not, Jason and the Isa brothers have done a phenomenal job at Warren Valley Golf Course. End of story. We, yeah, that's what we own the Warren Valley Golf Course. When Dan Palacco bought it before you you were on council and you guys approved to buy it. The first thing that was said was it was gonna be a money pit. When you talk to Warren Evans, the CEO that used to own it, you're in county said. I'm selling it because it's a money pit. The good news is, this is the final straw for us. It's always been a money pit from the day Dan Palacco bought that place. And you and Bill Bazey and Denise Malinowski Maxwell and Ray Muscat and Dave Abdullah and the and 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 the eight, seven of you guys have voted on it. Knew you didn't want it to be built on on anything. Now you're saying I want to keep it to staying a golf course, but we want to keep it to be on the golf course, but it can't have the right parking lot. Come on, guys, like, enough's enough. There's a vote on the table. Make the vote. You don't want to vote no, vote no. You want to vote yes, vote yes. This is a great job. You don't like it? Don't move forward. You don't like it? If it passes, it passes. If it fails, it fails. That's it.
I mean, how many parking spaces are there in that parking lot?
I personally don't know.
Four hundred?
I don't know, a ton.
No, we didn't count, but in the four fifty.
Four fifty, I mean, can't we do half of it?
What's the point? You have to do the other half regardless.
Not really. The the west half of the parking lot is in good shape.
No, it's not.
Guys, point of order, point of order. Nothing from the audience. I have a video that I can send to you that the whole place is flooded.
I've never visited that parking lot.
It's doing half, doing. Doing half, so what we're we're gonna do, the half the city uses and 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 or the schools and move ours, I mean, it it's, no, we didn't look.
I'm sorry.
It's it's the entire pavement is beyond, way beyond its useful life. It's it's really, when we took the course, we couldn't even keep them together. We corded, it wasn't even sticking together in the thing. It's it's beyond its useful life.
I'm gonna go to councilman Constant next, guys. I'm done with this conversation. We're taking it to a vote.
Absolutely, that's a go ahead. You know, we're all here. Originally, it was it's gonna be developed. Residents came out, they didn't want it developed, bought the golf course. Mr. Isa's and the city are fixing it up. It's a win-win for the parking lot because the parking lot is beyond its uh useful life. The the uh people from the school are gonna be able to park. Yeah, okay?
Yeah, man.
So it 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 allevates the big problem with traffic and at the school. It it's a great investment.
Do we own the parking lot?
Yes.
We could charge for parking.
Yes. Was that what we want to do to other students?
No, I mean, okay, then no. Or something.
You know, and and I hopefully by this end of this conversation, councilmen or or even councilwomen's, uh council members. You guys should go reach out to your superintendent, figure it out with Dr. Mussalam. And say to Dr. Mussalam, hey, we're getting the car parking lot fixed. We're paying for this percentage. Will you pay this percentage? And maybe other than myself, one of the other council members can step up and do that because.
Yeah.
I'm no longer gonna be making that phone call to Dr. Mussalam because I I I feel like it got us to nowhere. I got embarrassed in front of them. Uh, and 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 I didn't do it because I had a care for Dr. Mussalam or for the golf course. I did it because children, parents have called me. Parents have said my, our our lives are in danger when we line up on Warren Avenue. But instead, we looked around and we said, well, what was the city gonna get out of it? That's, to me, that's pure bull crap. It should have came down and said, absolutely, for the sake of our children and for the safety of our children, we all should have supported this, but we didn't.
Correct.
So now we left out two hundred thousand dollars on the table. So now we're forced to be paying for it. Dr. Mussalam is just gonna say, well, I'm just gonna have the parents continue to do the same thing. And they're gonna save two hundred thousand dollars. Or the city only begins paying, you know, seventy percent or sixty percent of this. And the school district pays the thing, which thank you to the school for even wanting to do that. But the reality is, they they came here, they had four meetings, they they didn't feel receptive. It is what it is. There's a motion on the table by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. No company was chosen. Uh, Councilman Ahmad or or this council, we need to now choose a company here, take it to a vote.
Um, council chair.
Choose alternates as well, like which alternates you want.
Yes, and 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 we'll have that discussion because it's not about socks. Nobody wants to pay money. We don't, we don't have the money to pay it. We really don't. Right? Just like we don't have the money to move to BSNA to go into cloud. We didn't have the money. You had to make it up. You had to figure it out. You had to get creative. In this situation, you had to be creative. We're we're. I I command Mr. Isa, good job on a great contract. I think the contract sucks for the city. Just like Councilman Wanso voted no, we had four votes, which he doesn't talk about. All he says is I voted no. Guess what? I voted no three of the four. Dave Abdullah, Councilman, former Councilman Dave Abdullah voted three times as well. He voted no. Nobody talks about that because we said we didn't like this contract. But what he also, Councilman Wanso, is not talking to us about is that we had the experts come here and say, if you don't vote on this this year. We're gonna forever lose our greens. Then it's just not, it's it's gonna it's gonna be developed, it's gonna be built on, and it's gonna be things that no resident wanted. So, yeah, I had to make, I was elected to make tough decisions.
Council chair.
And one of that tough decisions, hang on, councilman, one of those tough decisions was. The experts, I don't know, I'm not an expert in greens. I'm not an expert in golf. But the experts were telling us that our grass was frying and the only way you could preserve it was if you fixed it this year. If we, and mind you, I'm sure all the residents, in case you guys forgot, there was tall grass everywhere. Everybody was talking about the long grass. People riding their mopeds, it being abandoned. Imagine we waited till today. Sorry, the right decision wasn't no. It's a tough pill to swallow, but the right decision was not to vote no in the sense that we were gonna lose two hundred and seventy-four acres of land to nothing. That's what was gonna end up happening. And you'd have no revenue sources today. And you wouldn't have, according to Councilwoman Breyer, sixty percent of your residents enjoying the golf course today in the amenities. Uh, or a potential fire station, which I'm also voted no against. But being able to use, you know, somewhere to be able to build up. Go ahead, Councilman Wanso.
We did lose all the greens.
No, you didn't.
All the greens were resided. Every green there was resided. We lost every green.
No, it would have been worse.
No, it's they died and they had, it wouldn't matter if we wait two more years or.
I don't know. I don't know if Jason is on here that he could talk about it. I'm I'm not an expert on it.
We're not here for the greens.
We resaged all the greens, so what was.
He's just playing time, man. Put it to a vote.
So guys, who vote? I'm not. Point of order. Councilman Wanso speaking. Guys, point of order.
Repeating himself over and over.
Point of order, councilman.
I've never talked about the greens. It's a point of order. I mentioned something about the greens.
Point of order. Okay, council chair. Let's, Councilman Wanso finish.
I'm I'm, you know, I'm fine. I'm voting no.
Okay.
All right, great.
Council chair. Yes. Uh, Mr. Deep, are you familiar with all these bidders?
Are you, so these, it was sent to the same twelve bidders that bid before, six of them replied this time. And they're basically the same companies. Uh, six out of the twelve.
I know, I understand. Are you familiar with their work? Are you comfortable with them?
I work with most of them.
So if I if I go with the lowest uh bid.
They are qualified.
Asphalt specialists.
They are qualified.
Are you comfortable with that bid?
I can work with them, yes.
Okay. So, council chair, I would like to uh.
Council chair.
My motion to give it to Asphalt Specialist LLC with alternate one and two. Without alternate three. That takes us to. Five hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and one dollars. If I'm not mistaken. What does alternate one and two do again, guys? Well, alternate one uh is for a thicker driveway.
Yeah.
And alternate two is for new curbs, gutters and drains in the driveway.
Fixing the curbs and gutters.
I think this is something needs to, I mean, if we do the resurfacing without those two alternate. That doesn't make sense. I think it needs to be done.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, motion made by uh Councilman Ahmad with the chose of the company of asphalt specialist LLC. Uh, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Now that a company is chosen, any discussion?
Um, would you have Mr. Isa, if he has any intake on this?
Sure. What, if you want to speak on it? You have any intake? You just want it done, right?
We need a.
They're all qualified. Uh, not all of them worked with the city before, but they're all qualified. And uh you have them, you know, you have all the bids in front of you, so, you know. Uh, we're just basically applying, you know, qualified, the low bidders, uh, using those alternate. But yes, they they can all do it. I mean, absolutely. It's a, it's an alternate.
We need to add on.
Right, yeah.
Hang on one second. Councilman uh Wanso, what were you saying?
I said, do we need an alternate? Uh, I just brought up that we.
Yeah, he chose alternate one or two.
Wanted to just see, just the options. Now, okay, okay. Just one and two.
So I'm going with that bid. Alternate one is a thicker driveway. They have to make a thicker driveway. Uh, and alternate two is for new curbs, gutters and drains in the driveway. So it's. Yep. Okay. So basically, alternate one is to add the two inches in the driveway, correct?
Alternate one is to add, make it thicker and then fix the curves, uh, their broken curves.
Choosing one and two. Correct, so.
One and two.
One and two. And I love, number, alternate three is for the grass and the soil around the area.
Landscaping and grass, we can do later, uh, by a separate company or maybe next year.
Correct. Uh, I mean, for the record, I think it's about seventy-five thousand difference between this bidder and the second lowest. Two, yeah.
Seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, around seventy-five thousand. Any other discussion?
Council chair.
Yes.
Just for clarification, so we're going off the tally sheet.
Council Wanso, can you uh have told you discussions for later?
Cleared the base, because this is different. On the bottom, it says co- cost allocation. So we're not going by any of this. We're just gonna go by base bid, four seventy-six, nine forty-eight, alternate one, fifty thousand, eight fifty-three, ten. Alternate two, eleven thousand, eight hundred.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, just.
Yeah, that is NATO. Four seventy-six and fifty thousand. It's not five thirty-nine. This, yeah, but that's five thirty-nine.
What, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, what's that? Uh, Councilwoman, Madam Clerk, what what are you saying?
Okay, okay.
Numbers.
Oh, because you have the school portion too. Okay. Okay, so we'll just indicate the base bid amount and alternate one and alternate two.
That's the contract balance. That's the contract value. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I was looking at just the first box. I wasn't looking.
Exactly. And then I looked at the bottom. So we're just gonna go off that first line.
Correct.
Base bid and alternate one and alternate two.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Deep, how fast can this company start?
Um, I'm gonna have to get them um quickly. Um, and we'll work around the school schedule. We're gonna do it in phases, like one side first and use the other side, you know, half and half. Um, so we'll work around the school uh schedule. I'll get them started as soon as you approve it.
Council chair. Honestly, like we always say, and we've been remanders, cheapest is not always the best or the greatest. I'll be honest with you. Yeah. Searching a lot of these companies doing reviews and stuff, I mean, take it to a vote, but I don't think the cheapest bid is the best bid.
I know, financially, you don't have anything but the cheapest available.
I know. Well, material too and reputation and this kind of work makes a difference. Yeah.
Councilman, I completely understand it.
Every, believe it or not, every one of these companies has a lawsuit.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's, it's it's in the business.
Yeah, and I'm sure that, you know, that that's. It is what it is. Uh, but right now, there's a motion on the table, guys. We've sat almost forty-five minutes just talking between this and and. I'm like, you can hear it in the rest of this, like, what do you guys want us to do? Not fix the parking lot?
I want to fix the parking. I just don't think the cheapest bidder is the best, the best choice here.
I know, but at this moment, we don't have more money to pick a higher bid. We just don't. You know, it's one thing, we don't even have, we don't even have money to be able to fix the parking lot, let alone to go with the higher, with one even higher. So it's unfortunate. And, you know, I received an email today about other bidders that I have pleaded guilty. Look, that's it. Let's just. We we have a motion on the table. Let's just move forward. Okay? We have a motion here. Mr. Deep said he's gonna get this out as soon as possible.
Soon as possible, yes.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer to choose uh the company name again? Asphalt Specialist LLC. Asphalt Specialist. LLC. Uh, and choosing one and two, correct?
Correct.
The inclusion of one and two.
Okay, that's to fix the curbs, the drainage, the parking lot, widen everything over, all of.
The driveway, thick up, right, yeah.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right, Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Tom Winslow.
No.
Hassan Tab.
Yes.
Robert Constant.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Mobidun?
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
Did you see Robert Constant?
I did.
Yep. You do. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I I was, I go through the checkmark. All right, congratulations, guys. Wish you guys the best of luck.
Mr. Isa, what's your plan on actually opening up?
For you. Yeah, with Mr. Deep. Next up is Library Director McJeffrey, request for bids at Caroline Kennedy Library Storage Facility repairs.
Council chair.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the library to go out for bids for the repair of the library garage. To be paid from the maintenance account of which the current balance is over seventy thousand, as outlined in seven uh dash B.
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman uh Constant. Any discussion?
Council chair.
Yep.
Uh, director, if you don't mind, any idea how big is that? How big is that garage?
Um, if you walk outside the door, here, you actually can kind of see it. Yeah, it's uh, it's it's got a good foundation. The walls are okay. They need uh be straightened out. Uh, but everything else needs to be replaced, basically. Uh, and it's getting pretty close to a pretty blighted state at this point, so I figured, you know, we should clean it up. And both libraries uh have a very, they were built really well, but their storage was poor. At both buildings. And through twenty years, we have stuff that we use for our programs, a number of other things that we want to actually store. So we don't cost the taxpayers buying it again and again and again. Um, and also, another good purpose for it is kind of as a storage dock in a way, because it's got a nice driveway. A trucking backup to it. We can put a lift there. Currently, when we ever need anything with a skid, it just sits out. By the bank rack and I have to go in there and currently rush it all in so it doesn't get rained on or someone doesn't, you know, mess with the stuff, so.
Mr. Deep, are you familiar with the garage? Do you think we should, maybe once we, if it's approved to go out for a bid, do you think we should get a bid to for a hall replacement versus just repairs? I'm not sure about the.
So I, so we can.[1587.78] So I, I looked at that garage and saw that the uh building director and we both determined that it's structurally very sound.
Okay.
It, it is, it, it has T-one-eleven siding, which is exterior plywood, you know. It, it, it's, it's, the siding is gone. Um, but you know, to re-site it and put vinyl and all this, it's much less expensive.
So that's all it needs? Cause talking about wall needs to be.
Walls are fine. They were hit at one time. They can be, it, it, it's structurally very sound. And it's definitely worth saving because if you are to rebuild that thing, you're paying like ten times at least.
Okay.
The cost, you know, siding is, is very inexpensive, cosmetic, you know.
Good to know. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on this?
I'm also.
Also, okay. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Uh, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is reports from mayor, none. Reports from city officials, treasurer Hicks Clayton. Treasurer's office budget amendment.
Councilor.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the treasurer's office budget as outlined in nine uh dash A. Uh, general ledger number one oh one two five three seven zero seven one zero zero, tied apart time. Taking out five thousand from general ledger one oh one two five three seven oh nine zero 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 overtime, adding five thousand.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is nine B. City Engineer Deeb Water Meter Replacement Change Order Number One.
Councilor.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved change number, uh, change order number one in an amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty cents. To the drinking water state revolving fund, water meter replacement project as outlined in nine dash B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Malowski Maxwell. Any discussion?
Councilor.
Yes.
Uh, Mister Deeb. Uh, I was, I was going through, uh, it says, uh. Okay. Says here, uh, plumbing system preferable and requires, uh, requires freezing. What do you mean?
So, um. This is for the wa- uh water meter replacement project.
Correct.
So some of the older uh neighbors that we have. Um, had issues with trying to stop, um, shut the water off into the house. Some of these issues we ran into, um, uh, stop, um, uh valve was under concrete. So they paved over it, so we couldn't get to it. Uh, or, uh, the line coming into the house, um, uh, was so short from the wall. It had no place to, um, uh, put a valve. And you can't change the meter with the water running, obviously. So the alternate was a lot less expensive to put a two hundred dollar kit to freeze that pipe while we replace that. It, it, they do make them, yes, and they work. You can put that on there. It freezes the flow long enough for you to replace the meter. And then thaw that line and opens up. So that is in lieu of having to go back out and bust the concrete and try to get. Um, you know, stop valve working.
Okay, that's, that's, uh, that's amazing to be honest with you. But I'm looking here, there's two hundred and fifty-five of them. They haven't provided any list of addresses. You see which one are they doing?
Well, uh, the, the job itself, so, um, they're all over, uh, mostly. So what we did is we started for, in the south side. We're currently replacing all over the city, but we started with the south end of Dearborn Heights for two reasons. One, uh, we don't have, there are a lot of older homes. So if you are to have problem, we're currently at almost fifty percent. So I'm actually way ahead of schedule, um, on the thirty thousand, twenty-eight thousand meters. So we're, we're moving quite fast. So that's number one. And number two is we had issues with, um, south end is the like, the higher likelihood of lead service lines. Which if you recall, this project, by the way, we, we just had a surprise visit yesterday, all day from the State Eagle Inspector. To see how we're spending our money, uh, for these projects. And she went and looked at.
But no, no, I understand where you, everything you're saying, but I'm saying that, uh, like, wait trim, did it even, or however.
Trim, it's, it's another company.
I mean, this change order came from Waitrim, it sounds like.
Yes, no, I know. They, they're managing, they.
No, no, I understand. They're saying there's two hundred and fifty-five of them.
Okay.
Can we at least be provided to a two hundred and fifty-five addresses that they did the work to us?
Be happy to.
Let's refer those two over the nine B, nine C over. Uh, back to administration before we approve this. By the way, I hate the change orders. I hate what it, like, Councilman Wansel was just talking about this.
Yeah, no, no, but some of them, some of them, just, just so, okay, so we're, since we're talking about the second one. They, they, they see the clean water drinking, um, uh, change order, L forty-one. So the project, when it was designed, we were actually only replacing parts of the pavement where the pipes go in. So one, while we were doing that, the other parts, especially on the south end deteriorate. We couldn't even drive over it. It just fallen apart. So it was added to this project since we're out there replacing pavement. And keep in mind, this project is fifty percent funded by the state through a grant. So by uh putting it this way versus paying for it from Act fifty-one, I'm getting fifty percent of that cost paid by the state.
No, no, how much you call, Mister Deeb, but just looking for more information. We're replacing, you know, we, we, we were buying two hundred and fifty-five kids for two hundred and fifty-five homes. I would like to see those addresses for two hundred and fifty-five homes. Councilor. No problem. Just about freezing these pipes. Actually, uh, former councilman Ray Muska reached out to me two weeks ago. About one of his friends. They came in to change his meter. They couldn't shut off the valve from outside.
Yeah.
And so the only option is to really freeze it. It's a very common practice.
No, arguing that, I'm just saying, we're buying two hundred and fifty-five kits. I would like to see which homes we bought those kits for.
I'm pretty sure it's documented because.
Well, I don't see it here. Do you have it?
Uh-uh. I said, I'm pretty sure they have it.
I know we have it. Yeah, we'll, we'll send the documents. So what I wanted to do is have that on record so we're able to, I don't want this job to stop.
No, no.
Have the schedule, so we can provide these on, 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 on weekly, monthly basis, if you like. Um, in fact, what we're doing is.
We're gonna invoice, at least apply to the invoice.
Right, right. Oh, but you want the actual invoice?
So now, so you're saying we did two hundred and fifty-five homes or we're just buying kits?
We're buying kits.
We're doing that many.
Sorry, I just called Vaughn. He's actually online listening and I got some clarification. So first of all, you're looking at the wrong column. It's the first column. It's two hundred quantity wise, it's two fifty-five for the price. Um, but this is an estimate of how many we're gonna find moving forward. The ones that they currently have, they do have some addresses, but we don't have the full addresses for the two hundred that they're requesting in the change order.
So, but he does, he, we do have two hundred addresses that we're gonna use it on?
That's an estimate of how many they're expecting to find, but we do have some already.
I don't know how would they get the estimate though.
And again, Vaughn Martin is on Zoom if you wanna ask any additions.
Yeah, yeah, you can put him on.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Malowski Maxwell first. Make sure your microphone's on.
Are these? Yeah. Are these kits permanent when they're installed or are you?
No, no, you remove it.
So are they reusable?
No, no.
Okay, yeah, cause I'm not understanding it. I'll have to go look.
It's like a chemical you apply on the pipe and then it freezes it. And then when you're done, you remove it and it's a single.
Okay, now I understand.
It, it's, it's common practice. Uh, Councilman Saab knows about this. It, it, you know, plumbers use that. In fact, on larger pipes, if you can't stop the flow and you need to get work done.
Good thing, okay.
Councilor. Yes, sir, Councilman Wansel.
What's the odds of damaging the pipe, this procedure?
I asked that question, um, the really, I mean, these are old pipes, uh, and, and frost and it freeze and thaw. I mean, you know, I haven't run, so the few that we've done, no damage was done.
I know anytime a pipe freezes in a house, it bursts and it freezes.
Well, yeah, it's the short part coming from the basement wall or from the outside into your house right before the meter. So we're not talking about freezing the entire plumbing system.
Don't it takes a little section like that to freeze?
Right, right, but it's, no, we haven't seen.
You haven't had anything?
And it's not, we're not doing it excessively, like, long periods of time. Um, I've seen these people replace meters in less than twenty minutes, fifteen minutes, ten minutes. Depending on access, if the meter is accessible, they're really good at it. I mean, they have all the parts they needed. Uh, we, we ran into things like in the city with adapters that sizes were not standard in most cases. To the house plumbing and to the, to the city pipes. So they have to use adapters to try to make, you know, the.
They have a procedure in place if it, they freeze it and they can't get it hooked up? They cause out, start screwing water out, is there a procedure?
Well, they do have a plumber with them. I mean, I don't know what.
I mean, well, how would you stop it then? Is there, I mean, it'd be a good, it floods someone's basement.
No, we, we haven't run, we've got about fourteen thousand done so far.
Yeah. How, how many times did he use that freezing technique?
Few.
Just a few?
Yeah. But we just wanted, because, be, because of what we're seeing now, you know, we're just tracking two things. The, um, uh, where the shut-off valves are on the outside, so the city can be aware of them. And then two, where I have, um, um, lead service, which we've never tallied before. So now I have an idea where all the lead service are.
They're not freezing any leads.
No, 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 no. Lead, lead service, which is another thing, we, we told the inspector yesterday is actually under this project. Or under the water main project, if you run into lead service, we remove it. Uh, we're not keeping any safety concern.
Hey, guys.
Okay, can, can we hear from, uh, Vaughn, about, how did he come up with this estimate?
What's wrong?
No, nothing, nothing. I didn't know he was online. Vaughn?
While we are waiting on Vaughn. While, while we are waiting on Vaughn, I just wanna make a quick announcement. Uh, tonight is my fantasy football draft. And it's eight P M and I've been doing it for like fourteen years now. So if I do leave early, I'm letting you know that, that this is something that I, I never have on Tuesdays. But it was the only day that it worked for ten other guys and so.
We didn't hear that.
No, no, I'm very transparent. I don't hide. I, I don't leave council meetings early in four years. I don't, but this is a thing we've been doing for thirteen, fourteen. This is your fourteen. So. Look, I think the good news is, we don't, I don't know if we need to hear from Vaughn. I think what we can do is we can give an estimate of a hundred. And if you need more, you can come back.
They can come back to us.
That, that, that's what I think. And let's get the number to approve the quantity of a hundred.
And I'll get you a, addresses or when they, when they become available.
Please, yeah, yeah. That's, that's, can you do the math? I'm breaking down exactly what it is.
So I'm, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna go out and change my motion. I did the motion, right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go out and change the motion to, uh, uh, approve the change order number one. Uh, in the amount of, uh.
Fifty-one thousand, three.
No, no, this is gonna be half of that. Fifty-one, three, three, twenty divided by two to, uh, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Uh, twenty, uh, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
And, uh, to find it to be one hundred.
One hundred.
And is, but, then we have two fifty, not two hundred?
No, they had two hundred kits. We're going down to, it's two fifty-five per kit.
Let's, let's do, uh, and then can I get, uh, Councilwoman Malowski Maxwell to second that motion amendment?
Second.
Okay, to reduce it from two hundred to one hundred. Um, all in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is City Engineer Deeb, CWSRF, Lower Ruze, CSO area, L dash forty-one, project change order number one.
Councilor.
Councilman Saab.
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council, approve the change order number one to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, CWSRF. Lower Ruze, CSO area, L forty-one projects outlined in nine C.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. I liked the engagement today, guys. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? Rose has it, motion carries. Next up is the Do-It Director Cooper.
Do it. Yeah, do it.
Do it.
Do I T.
Do it. Just do it.
It says, do it.
Do it.
I'm sorry.
Do it.
It's caps.
Prime I T.
Director of I T, direct, well, it says Director of I T, Director Cooper, telecommunications credit class.
Councilor.
Councilman.
Move that Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the assurance of a credit card only to be used to pay for telecommunications invoices. That do not allow ACH payment, which includes internet cable and phones. This card will have a limit of twenty thousand dollars per month as outlined in nine D.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Um, you know, me, I got a question.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm definitely have a question on this. Especially in the cops are giving out money uncontrollably. Not saying that you're not gonna control it, but twenty thousand dollars, what's our current limit? Right now, all of our, our city issued credit cards are, are fourteen hundred dollars. What's that?
No. Police is the.
Parks and Recs Police Department. Why do you need twenty thousand dollars a month on, you know? Because that's roughly what we, what we pay for our, all our telecommunications bills monthly. That includes, again, all of our city issued, uh, cell phones. That includes our, um, DPW. Uh, Geo Tab, uh, tracking on their vehicles. That includes all of our. How have you been paying it regardless? We, we pay it, but again, this is looking forward to try to streamline what we're doing. So because we're constantly getting hit with, uh, late fees. I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm, I'm okay with increasing this for you. Twenty thousand dollars is not a number I can swallow. Uh, I can see, I mean, honestly, I want to go five, but I feel like ten is the real number. Our, just let you know, our Comcast, um, which we're under contract with internet bill is five thousand twenty dollars every month. That feeds our internet to all of our bills.
Councilor, I think ten thousand is a fair number. Twenty thousand is just, it's, it's really hard for me to come out and say yes. Especially when you, we've been operating this way for the last four years. I were coming out and saying, well, let's just think.
Again, this is two, this is two, this can be a, a credit card. I don't want, I don't even physically need to have on me. This is to set up so we can make those payments in a, in a timely manner.
But the point is, is to make sure that we actually have the money. What happens is.
We do, it's all budgeted. I wonder, when I, when, on my job, my telecommunications line item has it in there, when we did our budget, I went through and I, and just prior years. All right, this is where we're spending, what we're spending. I always, like I said in my, my original motion is, hey, sometimes those little taxes and fees you can't really avoid. Because that's what, you know, Comcast does or A T and T does and everything. But that's why typically we spend about eighteen thousand dollars a month. On all of our bills that we would be using this for.
Why do you need to go to twenty?
And it's already, it's already budgeted. Because again, those fees that sometimes you don't always, you know, you always can, can control. I'd rather be, I'd rather be a little bit safer than, hey, I can't, I can't pay a bill with it. Again, this is a credit card. I don't like it. Stay in her office, can stay in the comptroller's office. This is just to streamline what we're doing, sir.
Yeah, it's going on my.
Yeah.
I think what he's saying is, uh, we gotta pay it either way. And the way we're paying it now, we're paying probably extra in late fees. That we can get rid of by doing this. You know, I personally think the twenty thousand's okay. If we have a problem, we can come back and readdress it, but let's just give him a chance to show us what he can do with that.
Okay.
I like that. Thank you for that, Councilwoman.
All right, Chair.
Yep. Be on my credit card as I have to show the invoice of paying that credit card and it all gets submitted every single month.
Yeah, I'd like to sign it every month. And we did that for the police as well, but guess what? When we did the police, we started seeing things like Lowe's, uh, hotel. Uh, uh, we started, I started seeing things like a pizza. I started seeing alcohol. I was like, what the hell is going on here? Yeah, so we brought that number right back down.
But that's also why I say it's, it's only for the telecommunications. You're making a motion work.
Yeah, I don't wanna see gas and everything else.
If we don't have our cell phone, shut up.
But again, this motion, Councilor, only to pay invoices for the telecommunications. It's not gonna be used for anything else. It's not advised to use for something.
And I, and again, hopefully when we fully set it up, it's a credit card, it's in a drawer, never to be used ever again for this.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is the interim comptroller, Bedun, Infrastructure Resiliency Plan Contract Execution.
Councilor.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the Infrastructure Resiliency Plan Contract between the city and O H M advisors. For, for a total cost net to exceed two hundred and ninety-one thousand, hundred and nineteen dollars. And authorize the mayor and clerk to sign that contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasure to issue payment from account five nine two. Five three six nine two four five nine two, of which their current budget is two million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand as outlined in nine dash E.
Second. Motion made by. Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Const-, uh, sorry, Councilwoman Brier.
Councilwoman Brier.
Councilwoman Brier, yes, I gave you the last one. I, I gotta switch it up sometimes, Councilman, sorry.
No problem.
All right, any discussion? I, I gotta say. It, it's good that we're doing this.
Okay.
You know, but, um, I, I don't get like, uh, what the actual plan is here. And. Just feel like this is a lot of money. City council hasn't been provided with, uh, some type of. Uh, um. Some type of presentation, like the residents, the city council. We don't, we don't know what we're spending the money on. You know, it's like, hey, well, let's do this resilience plan. Let's do this resilience plan. And then, and then we just go ahead and if anybody's got water for the treasurer, that'd be awesome. Okay. Um, but if, uh, the, the truth is. I would love to support this. Okay, but there's no like structure, how it's happening, who's in charge, who's doing the oversight. Hang on, everybody wants to jump up, Matty, hang on, hang on. Just, just let me finish my conversation before you could jump up. And, and the truth is, like, let the residents see it, let the council see it, have a presentation. And then come back and put it before the council. I know you guys gave us the last bit that we, we had the first initial approval, which we read. That, this is a, this is a big investment. It's a big contract. Let this company come in here that, that, that loves us so much. Not just give us a website, but come in here and, and give us a breakdown, a run-through of what they're gonna do and what the plan is. And what the future of the next ten years of the city looks like. Not just, all right, here, we control this company and let's go ahead and prove. It's, we're just so, we're just not transparent. We're not like digitalizing ourselves for this community. And it's just like, snap your fingers, come on, everybody just approve it, approve it. I can tell you for me, I want the residents to be able to see, including myself. A rundown of what this is supposed to look like for these, you know, these two, uh, uh, motions. I'm not saying I don't support them. But I want, I wanna be presented from this company of what their contract is like, what their expectation is. Anybody's resume can look good. Put them before us. Let's have the conversation. Let's enjoy these moments. And this is, this is a great thing. But we need to like, we need to do better at letting residents at home and this body to be engaged and be involved. And I feel like we failed to do that.
So for these two items, the companies will be involved with, uh, resident meetings as well as council meetings, as well as administration meetings. Uh, this is a CDBGDR state-funded project, so although the amount is a big amount, uh, I believe eighty percent is funded by the state. The, once you award a bid, um, the project proposal, uh, presented last week outlines, uh, what they would like to do. And how they would like to do it. Councilor, they're gonna be doing all the meetings with you, the residents, and ensuring that.
But Matty, you know what's bothering me, uh, uh? interim comptroller, my, my issue is Mister Bedun.
Yeah.
Is that we're here and we're about to give them their money, they're not here. And, and, and they're like, well, you don't have the money coming. I don't care where the money's coming from. If it's coming, at the end of the day, it's coming from my taxpayer. It's coming from the state, the taxpayers paid it.
Well, I understand that.
Hang on. So like, and I'm not, this says not on you. I don't know why, like, anytime some, you guys bring something forward and we question something like, hey, we wanna hear from you, guys all get so offended. You get so, you guys get so agitated, like, why are you asking me to do that? Because it's rightfully so that the residents should be able to get a rundown on what's happening. The same thing happened with DARPA money. We had twenty-four million dollars. Oh, what do you guys wanna do? Then you guys did your own thing. Same thing is happening in almost every, Councilman Saab had the same issue about the fire station. Anytime we ask you guys to do something, everybody wants to give us their ends and butts about it. I'm, I'm gonna tell you, for me, when you're spending money like this, I'd rather have a sit-down where the community can be engaged. I'd rather have a sit down where the community can be engaged, the, the council can be engaged, they can give us, yeah, sure, they gave us a proposal. Guess what, I can give you my resume right now, but you go to, you go to some type of verbal and, and visual uh uh appearance. There's never, this administration has failed to do that these last four years, and so the norm has been, we don't need to have to engage the community in the council. Sorry.
I just said that the company will.
No, the company's asking to get approved and then they're gonna come.
So I do have a question then, last meeting that should have been mentioned that, hey, reach out to the company so we can do a study session.
Had that conversation with Mister Deep.
Well, that wasn't put on record with me.
I, I don't need to have that conversation with you, I had a conversation with Mister Deep, he should have sent it over to you.
Okay, I, that's hard scratch it, but okay.
So um I still have my notes from last time, this is the, these are the four projects that disaster recovery team had authorized after this. I, I went through this, I still have my notes from last time, and, and the only request from council was bring us the contracts so we can approve them. But I went through all the steps.
Had that conversation with you.
Sir, August twelfth, it was on, it, it is taped, you can, you can watch it. I went through all these items, this is, the, this election process, the, the out to bid, it was all approved by disaster recovery by, by the, by the government. Even this election process was that, this corporate services was approved by them, we didn't, they're paying eighty plus percent on all these. I'm not offending, I'm not. If you had said that last.
I didn't, I had that conversation.
No, you didn't, on August twelve, I went through all this, I still have my notes. And the only request was bring us those con, contract to see before we sign them, so we're bringing the contracts now. If you don't wanna sign them, that's fine, we will cancel the projects, no big deal. I'm, I'm just saying.
And listen, man, hold on for a second, like, that, that bullying where you guys just say, oh, well, you know, if you don't, if you don't do it, we won't bring you the contract. Mister Deep, hang on a second, please, I'm having a conversation with you. But like the, but like the condescending way of like, well, if you guys don't wanna do it, I, you guys don't wanna sign.
This bullying isn't gonna work. That's all it is, you're bullying us, you don't wanna approve it, don't approve it.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, let's bring, hang on Mister Deep, please for a second, you, you're not gonna turn the words that I just used and you bullying me to say that I'm bullying you. What I'm saying is, if you wanna have this, it's a lot of money, okay? The residents, hang on, I'm, I am echoing the voices of the residents, whether you like to hear it or not, I'm echoing the voices of the residents. The truth is this, I'm not telling you we don't wanna approve them, so stop bullying and saying, you guys don't wanna approve them, whatever, what I'm telling you is, let us have a conversation. Let them present this, we're giving them almost, I don't care if it's who it's coming from, if the state's paying eighty percent of it, we're still paying the other twenty. What we're saying is, if you're gonna get two million dollars from the city of Dearborn Heights, present to us.
Do you know the reason why we're getting anymore and we can't get any grants, it's because of this, everyone's watching our council meeting. I can't even talk to people anymore because they say they know we can't deliver. Who's been working on this for over a year, don't approve it, I'm just saying, I keep trying to delay if he's on our.
Why is it, don't approve it, why can't you say sure I will bring them in?
Councilor Chair. I, I think he's just frustrated because the communication between us and council is not very clear. Last meeting, we brought him to the table, you're saying you had a.
By the way, I had a conversation sitting with Mister Deep.
That wasn't on record, so other people in the community as well as myself were not aware of that, I would have contacted O H M who has been contacting me and said, hey. We gotta prove, when can we start this project, I'm like, well, we have to get, get the contract back to council, I have no problem.
Is there, again, is there a timeframe where you're like, oh my god, if you don't do this now, they're gonna, we're gonna lose this, cuz you know, that's always the excuse on you guys. You supposedly, you always come to us last second, all I'm saying to you is, please, I know Mister Deep's chattering there in the background because he doesn't like to hear the truth. The truth is this, all we're asking you guys to do is bring it before the council and give us, give us an update on it, that's it, let's hear from them.
Counselor Chair, that, what the frustration was with Mister Deep and why he just walked out.
Frustration, there should be nothing about being frustrated.
But what he's saying is, we came last, in last council.
I had that conversation with him, I'm not, I, I won't be, be said that I'm a liar.
Yeah, I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm not saying who said what, I'm just saying it was never informed.
You know, by the way, I just want you to know, and now for the record, this is the fifth time on a, on a different occasion, I've said to Mister Deep. When it came to designing the fire station, hey, don't choose a company, let the council and the body and the residents be involved. Okay, 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 no, what do you guys wanna do involved for? Have any company that they have brought out for bids or wanting to do business with the city, I swear, guys, all I'm saying is for the sake of the residents. This young lady right here might have a question, she might wanna be engaged a little bit more, but it's like we're silencing people. And saying, nobody should know how we're doing it or what company we're choosing or why we're using this company, please, Mariana, hang on one second. Because, and this is not the first time I've said this to Mister Deep off the record, I said it too, I walked when I was at City Hall. And he showed me uh about, uh you know, how we're gonna be doing all the roads and fixing up Ann Arbor Trail, and I said, hey, that's great. Let these companies come in, let them present, let's hear from them, that's all I'm saying, all, even this Ashwell company that we just chose. Uh let's, you're gonna get five hundred thousand dollars from the city, come in here. I just told uh our H R director, I walked up to him today, there's a, there's a bid that's out there right now. Six companies, they wanted to choose. Um I, I think, I think uh George is, is C C'd on the email. Where I said, if these companies are gonna collect the money from the city, let them all come and present, there's nothing wrong with that. Councilman Wanso, Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell, Councilman Ahmad, myself, Councilman Saab, Councilwoman Brier, Councilman Constant. Should at least be a part of hearing what these other companies have to say. Instead, we're just given a tally sheet and they say, based on the recommendation of Mister Deep or based on the recommendation of, of Manny Bedun, who Mister Deep is doing for him. Is saying, choose this company. No. And I don't wanna get into deeper as to why I'm asking these questions, by the way, because I promise you that if I start telling you why I feel this. And what companies were chosen, you would know why I'm saying what I'm saying. The reality is, I'm protecting residents, and I'm also protecting a potential lawsuit to come against the city. But the things that, the information that I've been given and the companies that we've been choosing, been unfair to the city. That, that, and I'll, I'll leave it at that, and that is not me making any type of accusation. Because if anybody wants to know the facts, reach out to me and I'll give it to you.
I would like to reach out to you.
This company, at least for me, this is gonna go to a vote, the council might say, I don't agree with you, Mo, we're just gonna choose them. For me, I would like to see these companies come before us and say, this is what we're gonna offer to the city, we're gonna spend two million dollars in the city of Dearborn Heights. This is what Dearborn Heights is gonna get.
It's two hundred ninety one thousand.
Okay, two hundred ninety one thousand dollars.
Not to, the balance is two million.
How much are they getting though, two million dollars?
No.
From the city, two hundred and ninety one. Two million dollars.
Thank you. So they're making two million dollars, regardless, we received a grant to be able to choose this company.
This company is not for two million, this company is for two hundred ninety one thousand.
Oh, sorry, well, this particular one is for two hundred and ninety one, I think the second one is the one that's two million. Um but again, just to clarify, the bidding process that you're requesting, it is out of the norm in municipalities. You don't typically invite non-contracted companies to come engage the community without getting paid for it. That is a process that will happen once the bid is awarded, and it is a process of this entire engagement. They simply give you a physical proposal, which is normal business. You don't engage with them, you don't request them to open themselves up to questions from their competitors, to see the plans that their competitors have. In a public setting, it is just not a common trend, I understand that that's what you're requesting. But it is not something that's required from federal grants, it is not something that's required from our procurement policies. I understand the value in you wanting to interview every single company, but again, that is the role of the administration. If you don't.
I'm not telling you. We're not gonna follow the recommendation that you, it, it, all we're saying is engage the residents.
We are, but that comes after you award the bid, the companies aren't gonna engage residents without being paid for it. That is, that is part of what their business is, so I understand your concerns. I'm just trying to clarify what the regular process of grants and pro, proper bidding is, according to those grants, which we have followed. And it has been approved every step of the way. Um they even come out and take pictures of all of our projects once they're in place. After you have a contract, you can request as many meetings, as many public hearings, as many in, input information that you might want. But if you don't have a contract, you're not really in a position to make requests that you're not under a contract with. So just to clarify, like, it's not that we're trying to be hard, it's not that we're trying to hide things, but this is not a common practice. And in all honesty, even if we ask these companies, I don't understand why they would be willing to spend hours here with our residents. Before having a contract for it.
You know why, I'm gonna answer that question for you, I'm gonna tell you the truth. Madam Clerk, I want you to email Mariana the minutes from two thousand and seven when the master plan was brought before the city, you know how, you know what the process was like? I'm gonna tell you how the process went, they came in here and they presented to the body, they presented to residents, they presented to the council, and that's how they chose their company. You know what this, you know what this administration has never done, other than the golf course, never given a presentation process. The only time there was a presentation process is when this body asked for it. Look what I want you to do, and I want you to go to the two thousand and seven minutes, I want you to email it to Mariana. And so I can explain to Mariana that this is an out of the norm municipality that the, that the mayor does it, guess what? It was, it was the right policy and procedure that Dearborn Heights did in the past, and Dearborn Heights no longer does today. That, that's where my issues and concerns come from. I know, look through the minutes from two thousand and seven. Yeah, anyways, there's a motion on the table here to, to approve this company, any other discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, no. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Robert Conston.
Yes.
Tom Winsell.
Yes.
Hassan Sab.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Nancy Brier.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Mo Bedun.
No.
Motion carries six one.
Okay, next up is interim comptroller Bedun, comprehensive master and environmental resilience plan contract execution.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the comprehensive master and environmental resilience plan contract. Between the city and McKenna for a cost of one hundred and twenty thousand. And authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk sign the necessary warrants. And for the treasurer to issue payment from account number five nine two, five three six, nine two four, five nine two. Is outlined in nine F.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman uh.
How many, how much money is in this account?
Any discussion?
Uh it's uh two million, the same amount as the previous one, it's coming out of the same budget line item.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, no, Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Hassan Sab.
Yes.
Tom Winsell.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Nancy Brier.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Robert Conston.
Yes.
Mo Bedun.
No.
Motion carries six one.
Okay, next up is interim comptroller Bedun, street pavement program contract twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven, contract execution.
Councilor Chair.
Councilwoman Brier.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the street pavement program twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven contract. Between the city and A N G Construction for a total cost of three million seventeen thousand three hundred dollars. And authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, which will expire in twenty twenty seven. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller clerk to sign the necessary warrants, treasurer to issue payment for major and local street repairs. G L accounts two oh three dash two oh three dash eight eight zero dot five hundred. And two oh two dash two oh two dash eight eight zero dash or point five hundred, as outlined in nine G.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Constant.
Councilor Chair.
Any discussions?
Uh we asked for a couple clauses here. And. Now look at this contract, it's a very ba, basic, basic contract.
Yeah, so the clauses um.
Where it was added, one year, the year, the year, the year.
That was, that was my error, uh when we included that standard uh thing. I forgot to include the special provisions clause as a separate document, cuz that's our standard uh construction agreement. So I have to create the special provisions with the three uh items that you listed in the prior meeting, I have them in front of me. I can include that document into the contract to make.
Let uh, let's refer this back and bring it back at the next meeting with those.
Okay.
Parts put on the piece.
No problem.
So we're gonna refer, Councilwoman Brier, you okay with referring this back to updating the contract like we agreed to?
Yes.
Alright, Councilman Constance, do you second that?
Or reluctantly, yes.
Alright, refer back to administration. Uh like, motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Constant, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the ayes have a motion carries, next up is library.
Chair.
Councilor Chair. Just like, these uh comptroller uh items, I mean, and it's probably no big deal, but in the last month, we've never had a comptroller come in. Give us uh, put items on the agenda before, and all of a sudden now that we have dozens of them. I mean, is there a reason why the comptroller goes on him to us now instead of?
We have Mister Deep to get away from the bid process.
Yeah.
And to let it to go through the building, the, uh the comptroller's department, cuz that's.
Just the bid process?
Yeah, well, the bid went through the comptroller's department.
So the whole thing's controlled by the comptroller's department, there's execution and everything now? That's, I didn't know, and.
Yeah.
That's a new process we're doing?
I mean, we, we, I, I don't know, I mean, look, Councilman Wanso, the mayor's not here.
Yeah.
Mayor's not here.
Nothing against the.
No, I understand, I'm not, I understand his point.
Like, we've never had the comptroller present stuff to us before, never, I mean.
Um I will speak to uh the councilman um. Uh Mister uh Deb normally forward all contracts to us, but I don't think Mister uh Bedun did that with this one, but we will look at it and review it.
Councilor Chair.
Yeah.
We hit this whole body, couldn't, Councilman Winsell there, had the same arguments about a month and a half ago. That we wanted through the comptroller, now he doesn't remember.
No, I, I don't think that's what, yeah, I don't know, hey guys. Alright, next up, nine eight, library director, what's that?
I saw you had a concussion, maybe I don't remember.
Okay, nine, guys, point of order, guys, let's go. Library Director McCaffrey, purchase and payment of library wireless upgrade.
Councilor Chair.
Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of upgraded wireless hardware for the Carolyn Kennedy Library. And the John F Kennedy Junior Library. And payment to B A E in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty nine dollars and one cent. To be issued from grants account number seven three eight dash seven three eight dash eight oh eight. Of which the current budget is fifty thousand as li, outlined in nine eight.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Saab, any discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
Uh Mister Cooper, how come we didn't get more bids just from B, B A E?
One, we're actually already under contract with B A E for a lot of these services. And two, because of how these uh connecting to our firewalls, only B A networks is allowed to have access to our firewalls. I'm not opening up to multiple companies, it's unsafe for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the ayes have a motion carries. Library Director McCaffrey, purchase and payment of library uh patron P Cs.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of twenty seven library patron P Cs. For total cost of seventeen thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. To be issued from grants account number seven three eight, seven three eight, eight oh eight. Of which the current budget is fifty thousand as outlined in nine I.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Saab, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries, Director McCaffrey, Director Cooper, thank you guys so much for that. Next up is Police Chief Hader, Exxon upgrades and update contract.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the updated contract between the city and Exxon for a total cost of two million one hundred and fifty five thousand five hundred and twenty nine dollars and fifty cents. Over a five year period. And authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, which will expire in December twenty twenty nine. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasure to issue payment from account one oh one three hundred eight one eight zero zero zero. Funding will need to come from fund balances outlined in nine dash.
J.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Mod, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion?
Uh Councilor Chair, I know we asked them to rewrite this contract and we dropped it from ten years to five years, I think we asked them to do that, correct? I'm not, uh. Yeah, but I also want to look at like the cost and what we can and can't afford. Correct, but why, why is coming from fund balance now?
Yeah, here's our, our captain.
Captain Hatton with the police department, so we did, uh obviously, we had the study session in May. Um that's when you guys, we presented an initial contract that was ten years, you guys were uncomfortable with it, you asked us to also consult with Plant Moran. Um which we did that, um we got an initial quote for a five year contract, uh we presented that to Plant Moran, they had some concerns. But they also had some very good feedback, part of their feedback was to see if we could scale back some things and uh which we did. So we scaled back, we uh removed the drone program from the contract, we removed most of the A I platform from the contract. So the quote that we presented to Plant Moran in June was for just over three thousand dollars. By doing something, the scaling back, we took almost nine hundred thousand dollars off it, and almost hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. So at this point, I believe we have scaled it back as much as we can, and we did do the five year contract because that was a recommendation you guys had for us.
Do you know when is this contract will expire, Captain?
Twenty twenty seven.
Twenty twenty nine.
No, no, not this one, like the, whatever we have right now.
Current contract will be a twenty twenty seven.
Twenty twenty seven.
Correct, twenty seven.
I don't know, I can't recall, what's the reason why we had to jump in for the contract, do you bump?
Yeah, because uh we, we uh.
I know they wanted to add more.
What it's gonna cost us by the time it expires and what we're gonna be paying now is gonna be almost double. So if we try to get what we're getting today under contract, in twenty twenty seven, the number's gonna be a lot more.
Yeah, and it shows it right on the front, the total savings by doing it now will be a savings of over a million dollars.
You, you're gonna have to have body cams and, and, uh, and, uh, taser guns and everything.
Tasers, body worn cameras, cameras in our building, cameras, in-car cameras, um, we are going to have some of the AI platform, some of the AI platform will be the body worn camera translation feature that you guys saw firsthand. It'll also be the, uh, virtual reality training, which you guys actually participated in, and the draft one, um, platform, which will assist officers in writing reports more accurately and efficiently.
Uh, constitutionally, my second question, I don't know if Matty can help, how come is, if it's everything coming from fund balance, nothing was budgeted?
Yeah.
I mean, we do have this contract, why, nothing was budgeted before?
Because we're only budgeting the current, the current contract.
No, I understand, but now they're saying everything is coming from fund balance, at least a portion, whatever we had before should come from, whatever was budgeted for.
So for this year, this is a five-year, um, uh, program, so although you can say it's coming from fund balance, and next year's budgets and the budgets after that, uh, we have to assess the city, their revenue sources and allocate costs. Well, um, this year, you could possibly pay about half of that charge out of the contractual services. The rest of it, you'd have to use fund balance for that. It used to be forfeiture. Yeah, it used to be forfeiture, but, uh, forfeiture funds are not gonna cover that much at this point.
How much is in the forfeiture account?
I believe one point four million, right? Give me one moment.
Council chair. Sergeant, do we still have the Star Chase?
Uh, it's captain, uh, we do have the Star Chase, we have it not implemented yet, we're working to implement it, we have the equipment, but we haven't implemented it, we're working on it.
Is that, is it on any of the cars?
It is on the cars, we're just not using it, so you don't have a policy procedure written yet, and we have to put people through training to use it.
Is that part of this package?
No.
No.
Completely different.
Sorry about that.
I'm so sorry, guys, I do have to excuse myself.
So currently, we have one point six, uh, million dollars in forfeiture funds, but the contract, current contract by Axon is still coming out of that.
And it won't be prorated if we entered into this contract?
Sorry about that, what'd you say?
Want to be prorated into this new contract?
Will it be prorated, or will that charge be on top?
So, so what I can tell you is the first year, you'll notice, the first year, the payment is lower than years two through five, obviously. Axon's willing to do that for us, because that's what we already owe them under the current contract in twenty twenty this year. Um, that's what we owe next month, so by doing that, there won't be an immediate financial impact for us, if that makes sense, that's what they're willing to do. And obviously, that difference, the increase will be felt and spread across years two through five. So there would be no immediate financial impact, that's what we already owe Axon under the current contract.
Now, quick question. Um, so for the current one, are you saying that we're gonna pay that out of, uh, forfeiture and then the rest of them out of, uh, uh, contractual services, because that, the way that it's written, it says all on the contractual services, that's why, uh, I haven't assessed the entire impact of this yet, I wasn't presented with these numbers.
Do you what, you guys wanna table this?
I wanna table this, I wanna.
Assess the numbers?
One thing I will say is, the reason we're presenting this now is because we have early adapters, discounted pricing that included in this contract that was proposed, we lose that September first. So September first, we would lose the early adapters pricing and all these numbers would go up, so. I can't give you, uh, my Axon rep, sales representative, it's actually on Zoom, I don't know if he could provide you specific figures, but it would go up.
Yeah, go ahead, madam clerk, can you un?
We believe that this is, this is the cheapest, this is gonna cost now.
Captain, do you know his name?
Yeah, Kyle Heights, you guys met him at the demo days, also met him.
And, um, I knew him.
Kyle Heights, he was also here for the, uh, study session in May.
Yeah, did you say September first?
September first, we lose the early adapters discount, yeah.
Hi, council, how are you? I'm ready this afternoon, this evening, I guess. Doing well, uh, thanks for having me, yeah, captain, I appreciate it, um, the early adopters incentive pricing is just under four hundred thousand dollars, so it's three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and some change. And another piece regarding that September first date is September first is when, uh, the invoice from your current agreement will be issued. Um, and so by doing this prior to September first, it allows us to leverage the funds that are currently budgeted towards the Axon contract, towards the, the upgrade, in addition to taking advantage of some of those savings. So that's kind of where that September first date is, is important, is it's allowing us to tap into existing budget dollars without impacting the, uh, twenty twenty five fiscal year, um, as well as those early adopter savings.
Thank you, Mr. Heights, for the information, but we kind of, we need to assess some information, some numbers here, is there any possible way we can push it two more weeks for the next meetings until our comptroller department can assess those numbers, if you don't mind?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if, if approving this now is not on the table, it's a conversation we can certainly bring back next month, um.
We need two more weeks, we'll, we'll, we'll have this back on the table next meeting.
Yeah, so next meeting on September tenth, we'll have it, and I'll have a outlined, uh, financial plan for it, to see where we're gonna be funding this from.
Are, are you okay with that, Mr. Heights?
Yeah, if that's what the council needs, then, then we were certainly willing to work with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ju- just, just let me say, we are also in the process of seeking out grants, securing grants. We have identified some grants through MMRMA that, uh, we've secured several grants from them in the past, we have a good working relationship with them. Uh, we've already identified some, but we can't apply for them until October. And we feel confident, we'll, we'll, we'll get some of them that will also help towards this, I just, I would just hate to lose any type of discount or anything, you know, because the longer we wait, the more this goes up.
No, that's excellent, captain.
If we can't get this done this year, if we gotta wait till next year, it's gonna.
No, no, thank you very much, we're just gonna, we got the okay from Mr. Heights, we're gonna extend it two more weeks. Matty's gonna, you know, do his numbers, and we're bringing it back in two weeks, madam clerk, if you don't mind. Uh, any more discussion from anybody, or are we okay with tabling this?
Yes.
We'll get discounts from MMRMA also, the cameras and so forth, we'll get discounts from our insurance carriers.
Well, what we, we've already identified some grants that we're going to apply for, that apply strictly to in-car cameras, body worn cameras, tasers, and we, but the deadline to apply for those is not till October, so I can't tell you right now, we've already applied for them and, and we're gonna get them, we, we feel confident, we'll, we'll get them, we've got some in the past. Good relationship with MMRMA, but we can't apply, like, the deadline's at October, so even if we apply tomorrow, we gotta wait till October, that's when the deadline is, and that's when they start awarding the grant, so.
Captain, I, uh, I fully support this, but let's get a plan in place. Council people, please go through, before speaking, councilman Constance, are you, are you done? Councilman, I'm at a best three times to speak and you cut us off. Was speaking. Yes, you cut me off all the time. Councilman Saab, go through that chair, please. Councilman Constance, are you done?
Done.
Are you all set, councilman Saab? I'm not all set, I'd like to speak. Go ahead. You wanted to shut this off and take it to a talk, but we have questions too. We're still in discussion, councilman Saab, councilman was still speaking, please.
He was not.
No, he was.
No, he was not.
No, he was.
No.
He was. And I told everybody to go through that chair for the last time, councilman Saab.
Right, directly, you keep interrupting me.
Let's keep it respectful, please.
You keep interrupting.
It's your time now, go ahead.
You keep interrupting. I'm actually, I wanna take this vote, though. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna put a motion on this.
It's not, it's not your motion, councilman, uh, Constance, you had a motion, would you like to refer this back to the administration?
Yeah, to get it quickly approved, yes.
Okay, do we have a second? A second by councilwoman, uh, Malinowski Maxwell?
It was your, it was yours.
Wasn't mine?
Yeah, you and.
Okay, then I'll change my motion to refer it back to the administration. Do I have a second? Second by councilman Constance?
Yes.
Let's take it to a vote, whoever is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Madam clerk, please take your call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Sab?
No.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
And Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Motion carries five one.
Thank you, motion carries. Uh, moving on, there's no petition from citizens, no eleven, no twelve, uh, new businesses, thirteen A.
Council chair.
Councilwoman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the placement of a no left turn sign on Fenton at the northbound entrance of the Half Circle Drive of the Star Academy Football Field, as outlined in thirteen A.
Second.
Uh, motion by councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, seconded by councilwoman Breyer, any discussion? I see none, whoever's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Madam clerk, please take your call.
Hassan Sab?
No, is there a traffic study done on this?
Do I need to keep? Um, can we, can we go back to discussion? Okay, go ahead, just take the votes, madam clerk.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you, madam clerk, going to thirteen B. Temporary food truck, tent cart license renewal application, B Rock Taco Truck.
Council chair.
Councilwoman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck, tent cart license renewal application for B Rock Taco Truck, as outlined in thirteen B.
Second.
Uh, a motion by councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, seconded by councilman Constance, any discussion? I see none, whoever's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it. Moving on to thirteen C, temporary food truck, tent cart license renewal application, Smash.
Council chair.
Councilwoman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck, tent cart license renewal application for smashed, as outlined in thirteen C.
A motion by councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, seconded by councilwoman Breyer, any discussion? Whoever's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it. Moving on to thirteen D, business license renewal, Rusted Crowe Distillery.
Council chair.
Councilwoman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license renewal for Rusted Crowe Distillery located at six zero five six North Telegraph, as outlined in thirteen D.
A motion by councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, seconded by, seconded by councilwoman Breyer, any discussion on thirteen D? I see none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it. Moving on to, uh, comments from council members. Any comments from council members?
Council chair.
Go ahead.
I just learned last Wednesday at our, uh, study session, that one of our ordinance officers has been suspended for a while. And I think it's really bad that the timing is now when we need everybody on track.
Any more comments from council members?
Council chair.
Yes. Uh, go ahead, councilman.
Our children are back in school, as to echo what I saw our councilman Hassan Saab posted, please slow down, we don't, we don't need a child hit and hurt or killed.
Thank you, councilman, any more comments from council members?
Council pro tem?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, councilman.
Thank you. Um, if anyone wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting, I made an announcement that, uh, uh, my name's gonna be on the ballot for reelection for city council, uh, in November, however, I, I will not, will not be seeking the seat. I will turn it down, so, and every resident out there that votes, their vote is very important, and you have to make it count, so please don't vote for me in November. I won't be accepting the seat, vote for the other candidates that you choose. Um, I wanna thank all the people that have supported me, my eight years on city council and all my years involving with the city of Dearborn Heights. On, on another note, uh, the Jamie's Kids Nonprofit is holding a second annual family fun fair, Saturday, the Saturday, August thirtieth, ten AM to four PM. It's an event where we have free barbecue picnic, balloon, magician clown, bounce houses, DJ, face painting, rock painting, free raffle prizes, cakewalk, free drinks, make your own ice cream sundae, golf clinic, soccer clinic, lacrosse clinic, hourly bingo, uh, limbo contest, and it is a Hawaiian theme, wear a Hawaiian shirt and you get a special prize. And everything in the, all day to everyone is completely free, food and everything. I hope to see everyone there at ten AM at Swapka Park, that's kind of O W Best at, school at, uh, fifty-four ninety-nine McKinley Street, Dearborn Heights, thank you.
Thank you, councilman, any more comments from council members? Well, I'm gonna have to wish everybody happy Labor Day, have a nice weekend, tomorrow, uh, there is an event at the police department from five to seven. It's back to school safety and overdose awareness, everybody is welcome, uh, they're gonna have free giveaways, uh, sweet treats, ice cream. Uh, so I hope I can see many of you over there tomorrow, between five and seven, and I know some of our favorite seniors are gonna be there to help too. Uh, so if I see no more comments from council members?
No comments.
Go ahead, councilman.
So, again, keep fighting about and talking about blight. You see your neighbor's house, or any residents that have blight issues, please report it, if nothing's get done, email one of the council members. Make sure to get that school zones, uh, school started, slow down on school zones. And, uh, hopefully, uh, we won't have any, uh, serious problems with stock, it's crossing streets like we do every year here. And last, I just wanna say something, when I ask to speak to something and council chair or council pro tem does not allow to share, I have questions. And a question for the guy, for Axon, that's why I have questions, I asked three times. But seems like everybody's in a rush to go home, I'm not. We wait, we represent the residents, we represent every resident, I'm not in a rush to go home, I wanted my questions answered. Not to bring it back in two weeks, I wanted to know the answers tonight since he was on Zoom. It seems like you're in a rush to go home, council pro tem.
Also, Saab, are you?
Thank you.
Yep. I'm not in a rush to go home, and all I ask to go through that chair when you'd like to speak, everybody was speaking at the same time, and that's not gonna happen.
Well, I actually.
The next time you go through that chair, councilman Saab, before you speak, that's all I'm asking for, thank you very much, moving on to announcement from, uh, directors or city officials.
Council chair, pro tem?
Yes.
I'd just like to wish all of our labors here in the United States a very safe, um, thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you very much, madam clerk. Madam treasurer?
Hello. Good evening, honorable council members and residents, um, speaking as treasurer, Lisa Hicks Clayton. Three things real quick, to, um, answer councilman Wenzel's question that he raised on six A with claims. If there is any general ledger, I check those, a check that comes forward that's exhausted, I will reassure you, I do not sign those checks and I send them back. So that is the answer to that, that's my job, that's what I do. The second thing I wanted to, um, let everyone know is I've got two events coming up. The first one is the Scoops and Smiles, which is also Saturday, August thirtieth, two PM, at Custard Hut. This is a chance to come enjoy some ice cream, compliments of the treasurer, a good time to chat, talk, get to know who I am, and I get to know you and hear your concerns and questions. And I can answer any questions you have about the treasurer's office, and of course, I always wanna say, no public funds are used for that. Um, the other thing I have coming up, real, really excited about this, this is really new, is the, uh, Michigan Department of Treasury and your city of Dearborn Heights Treasurer's Office, here we go, this, are you guys passed out? Uh, we're partnering for a, the MI Money Matters, is financial literacy program, we've been working on this one. This is for all ages, so it is from like, you know, high school on through our seniors, all the different financial checkup, money personality, budget tools, how to borrow money, what that looks like, borrowing smart. So, um, this is a really exciting education program, hands-on, interactive learning, and that is gonna be on Monday, September the eighth, seven PM, at the Carolyn Kennedy Library, we're gonna be posting flyers everywhere, but the, what I gave the council tonight, we have these at different locations, including the treasurer's office, we'll get them to the libraries and senior centers as well, and hopefully, maybe to some of our seniors in high schools, because they need to know before they go get that credit card how that works. But this is a great way, you can scan the QR code and see what the programs are all about, this is really exciting, really new program. And Dearborn Heights, we, um, you know, I called them up and said, hey, we wanna do this, and we're like a pilot, you know, we get to be one of the first communities to do this in the state of Michigan. So I wanted to share that with everybody, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, madam treasurer, any more comments from?
Pro tem?
Go ahead, councilman.
Um, just a word, uh, Lisa Hicks Clayton, our treasurer, she is be, part of our family fun day, she is presenting the, uh, back-to-school giveaway, uh, items, and, uh, as of now, we still need some more items, if anybody's interested in donating back-to-school items, then contact the treasurer's office and make arrangements to have them dropped off or picked up, thank you.
Thank you, uh, I see no more comments.
Council chair.
Yes. Councilwoman.
Yeah, announcements.
Going gets around.
Tomorrow night is, uh, the Ecorus Creek Commission, six PM at three, 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 five, South Beach Daily, hopefully, we'll get updated on some things. And more importantly, on Thursday, the twenty eighth, we will have a, a forum on the four or five council members running, and also the two people running for the treasures, at seven PM, three, 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 five, South Beach Daily, the Westwood School Board meeting, their building. So hopefully, see some of you there.
Thank you, councilwoman, definitely, we'll be there. Uh, moving on to public comments, you have, please state your name, the street you live on, the city, you have three minutes.
Marjorie Pasquale, Syracuse Street, I was just curious, I didn't know, I was surprised to hear about this little water monitor, and I was just curious for my own self. Um, so what, uh, I can, I can understand it monitors the water, the, uh, when we have heavy rains, whatever, but what happens? I mean, how does it benefit us, does it, uh, a siren go off when it goes so high, or does it notify somehow electronically to the, the fire department, and the fire department tells a certain area that's gonna be. And fire department tells a certain area that's gonna be flooded or what use is it?
It's a good point.
Are you all set, ma'am? That's, that's your question? Thank you. You can answer. Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, it, it, it collects data. It tells, it's a, from the federal government. It, it keeps and collects data. And it does warn if the level of the, uh, creek or the Rouge River goes up.
Who's the origin?
No, no, it's pretty much a monitor, just to monitor like the level of the, of the creek and how much water coming in.
It's just enough. They just, the data is transmitted amongst.
Pay for access to it.
Just the access to the information?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dancy, do you think we can look into this? Just kind around the solar panel to make sure we have, uh, good data. Ah, that's a county. So we need to send it to the county?
Again, DPW can go and see if there's something they can access from the streets, but if it's from the creek, we would have to reach out.
Okay, so can we reach out to the county?
Yes, absolutely. If, if they tell me they can't reach it, I'll reach out.
Thank you very much.
It, it, it's right on the corner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Emery. Uh, do we need more comment on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
Council Pro Tem?
No more, no more comments? Yes, Councilwoman?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the Dearborn Heights City Council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Milenowski Maxwell and seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a nice evening.